Try it again, give me everything everyone. On our social media platform. It's good to see each and every one of you here today, your beautiful faces, your beautiful smiles. We thank you for being here in our town meeting and of course our ratification. For two people who would have stepped up again to be the, I would say Power Rangers. I know you guys are old enough or young enough to know about the Power Rangers. Back in the day, we really stood against, you know, the things that were happening in the country and the, you know, communities or whatever, but heroes who stood up and who stood. And we say again, thank you to our candidates who already been by. Thank you to our president, our deputy leader, our national chairman. Thank you everyone for being here. And again to you who allowed us into your home, thank you. Social media, thank you Facebook, thank you YouTube, thank you for having us. Okay, good evening. This evening, we come together not just as supporters and members of the Coalition of Independence, but as a community ready to shape our future. This is more than just a town meeting. This is where our voices rise. Our ears are sparked and real change begins. Get ready to stay engaged and let us make tonight count.
Yes.
So I don't know, those of you who are out there during the asylum bill that was supposed to be debated in Parliament the other day. I don't know if any of you in the audience were there who stood up for our country. We say thank you to our president and thank you to everyone who did not allow this to be stuck under the rug. For another bill to be tabled and passed without the Bahamian people's position and without the Bahamians people's knowledge of what is going on in our country. It's very important to be learned and educated about what is happening. And sometimes they use these big words and you don't understand. But it's okay because a lot of us now have Chat G P T and we have Google and we have all those things. And then those fail, we have Maria and we have all the other people who are able to educate us about what is happening in our country. And again, we say thank you, thank you, thank you for standing up for our people. Thank you for standing up for this generation and the next generation to come. When we look in the eyes of our children, we have some children here. We believe that we are fighting for purpose. We believe that we are fighting for the new Bahamas because the new Bahamas is in our midst. And we believe that we have it as the Coalition of Independence. So not to be a part of Parliament, but to be the voice in Parliament who will make legislation, who will do the things and stand up once and for all for our Bahamian people. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you for all of the supporters. Everyone who went out there was not easy. It's not easy to stand up against some giants, but we believe in the Coalition of Independence, the giants do come down. And we are thankful that God is the head and at the helm of everything we do. And we believe that our leader stands on that premise that he stands in the midst of God and he speaks only what God tells him to speak. And he does what God tells him to do. And we are thankful for that a man of God that stands up and speaks what God says to God. We can't say that for everybody in this um country. We can't say that for everyone. However, we stand with our leader, we stand with his strength and we encourage him even as we lift his hands because sometimes the burden is heavy. Sometimes the burden is hard. It's hard to fight against things that have been going on for years and generations and generations. It's hard to break it down, but bit by bit, breath by breath, we will break it down. And we will give you the new Bahamas of truth about that you and our people be proud about for generations to come. Again, welcome. So right now I'm going to have a little introduction of two candidates who came and they said, why not me? Why not me? Why not me? Because a lot of times people think it's easy to say, I'm gonna do this. It's not easy. I want you to know it's not easy. It's not easy to stand up in the midst of everything that is going on in our country and say, oh, I'm going to do it. After you see the ridicule of people over and over who said they're gonna stand up. After you see them following you and after you see them digging and finding nitty things that probably had happened years and years ago and they try to post them as things that are happening. Now, after you see that, you're like, you know something, I don't think this is something for me. But these people have said, you know, something, forget about all that, forget about me. Because when you come into this place, it's not about you anymore, it's about God and country. And we say thank you again for that. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. So I'm going to give you a brief synopsis about both of our candidates. Valentino McKenzie is a leader shaped by humble beginnings and driven by service. Raised in an urban community, he developed a genuine heart for the people and deep understanding of the challenge everyday citizens face. His correspondence both in the public and private sector giving him a broad perspective on how systems work and how they can work better. As the founder of multiple technology ventures, Valentino has built e-commerce platform, enterprise system, blockchain solutions and national level digital infrastructure.
Wow.
His work demonstrates, yeah, say it again. Yeah, wow. His work demonstrates a proven ability to modernize, update the system through smart technology and driven innovation. Why they respect for his authenticity, reliability and longstanding record of service. Valentino has been showing up for the people long before stepping into the political arena, especially in moments of crisis and community need. His commitment is rooted in family, legacy of service, sacrifice and national building, which continues to influence his mission today. Now leading several web developers, mind this into me, this person is very, we have very extremely intelligent people. Here are these people, you know, we appreciate everyone that comes and stands with us, but these people are very qualified for these positions. Again, thank you. Now leading several web development and A I focused companies. How many people know that this is where the world is heading in A I? Everything is A I right now and we are grateful for someone in that position and in that arena. He is helping to drive entrepreneurship, empowerment, local talent, empower local talent, sorry, and expand our creation across the country. Valentino McKenzie stands as a forward-thinking builder grounded in community and dedicated to a better future for all. Let's give it up for him. And we have yet another. Doctor Jermaine A. Hicks is a devoted father, husband and accomplished businessman. He is the owner of Modern Home Bahamas and Humanity Inter Island Grocery Supply International. Two enterprises that reflect his commitment to innovation, community support and national development. As a seasoned veteran politician, Doctor Hicks is known for his steadfast heart for the people, one that never wavers. His leadership is grounded in compassion, service and deep sense of responsibility to the communities he represents. Guided by his favorite scripture, Ezekiel one and nine, there is no new day under the sun. Doctor Hicks carries a perspective shaped by wisdom, humility and enduring faith. Let's hear it for Doctor Hicks. At this time, we will have regards and we will have the charge by our national chairman. And I don't take this lightly when people come to serve. Because that's what you came to do, you came to serve the people. This is a sacred moment. This is a sacred moment for our people. This is a sacred moment and an oath under God. This is a moment that people stand up, but you speak to God himself and tell him, you've chosen me and I'm going to go forth. So I believe this is a sacred moment, I believe this is a divine moment. And I believe that these people are going to go forth with power and authority that God has given them himself. So we're gonna welcome our national chairman as she takes the charge and she gives them the oath and she tells them, you know something, this is what we expect you to do. But you know, our national chairman is a warrior princess herself. She is going to charge both Mr. Valentino and Mr. Sorry, Doctor Jermaine Hicks, thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to everyone that is present, to those that are streaming online, our supporters, family and constituency teams and every citizen listening near and far. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Tonight is the night of purpose, of conviction and to move forward. Tonight, we do not just celebrate candidates. We officially ratify and endorse leaders who are prepared to fight for the new Bahamas. Remember, the Coalition of Independence was not born for ceremony. We were birthed out of need, out of injustice, out of the cries of the Bahamian people who felt forgotten, unheard and most importantly unprotected. And it is for those people, the everyday man, the struggling mother, the ambitious youth, that we stand tonight to confirm two strong, capable and committed men for national leadership. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, you would have heard our host speak on Mr. Jermaine Hicks. I would like to welcome Mr. Jermaine Hicks up to the podium to give you a brief summary of himself before we make the official ratification. Is it Jermaine Hicks?
Good evening to our leader, president. I know, deputy. And to all of those who are watching, uh who expect the best from this party. I come to say today that this is the crucial time, uh, for the, as the Indians, uh, because it doesn't matter who we choose this election. We are being confused for so long as a, as a country, we are being separated and divided as a country simply because the P L F N M P. Chosen, chosen to take a dive. Our society and our people, the most beloved families. They have, they have tried but now failed. And what's just to the point where we have to take back our country. They are the youngest one and the biggest generation of curse in our country. And the whole world knows this. You know, I wanna say some things about me, but I think the Bahamas is a climate community. So everyone knows that, why I'm unused to this, I'm unused to, to doing what I do for people. But I would say this. I feel a sense of urgency to, to make persons understand where we are headed because of the P L F N M P. I, I, I witnessed young girls, young girls as, as young as twelve, thirteen, fourteen, you know, being proud, relating and trying to be a part of what they see on social media.
Yeah.
Women, you know, women. Okay, but just standing up being leaders, um, who just wanna be able to come out and suggest what, this is what we are prepared to do and fight for government workers for the Indians. It's wrong. And the crime minister needs to understand that he is wrong protecting those places, selling them out as being a coward. You know, you stand in one brand and would say that you don't wanna discuss or sit down with persons who basically, um, 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 making noise or cussing or whatever they can, no, that's not true. But yes, still you endorsing persons to attack us, it's wrong in our country. This is the time now to remove, um, above that, beyond that, and start to, to think of, go back to Bible days. You know, start being on the, uh, uh, on the people, start to love one another. You know, the cost of this too, too high in our country, it's too, too high in our country. You know, especially for my car, I have to speak it.
Yes.
You know, I would give, I would, I would say this, in, in, in itself, you know, there is more than salt. And they have the only, the largest food store there. They produce the salt there from right next door. But they're still selling, selling a box of salt to the residents for five dollars. Okay, that's like somebody coming in my yard.
Right.
Teaching my COVID and then coming back to me to sell it to me. Okay, it's a crime. This is why I can say from the beginning to now, for the positive to yes, we need a crime in this system. Elections, it's all about, it's just about the experience and not about what it is that we need to sit down and take serious for our future. So I say to all of us in here, I say, I say to, to everyone up here, this is the time now to move above that. Move above that. Yes, there's only two major political parties in this country, the P L F N M P and the C O I. Time to make a decision. And if we don't, we're gonna go to another turmoil where this country will step away from us. Business being sold every day. A six million dollar puppy who tried to sell for one point five million dollars. That's a slap in the face and going down to the very end, they take it. I, I bring some news to the leader earlier today and I said, leader, we, it's, it's, it's a lad, but we have to fix this. Let me get back into this. In the past three weeks, in Latin survey, one of the most highest officials in this country, Navy was just got two acres of property. Okay, no question. In the past six months, one of the other Navy was got fifteen acres, but they say there's nothing here. They said there is nothing here in Providence. Okay, it's wrong. We have places, uh, uh, burnt down, families who are on the street, you know, who have applied for years and has never gotten anything because they are a part of the P L F N M P. We need to change that. We need to fight like it's never before. And this is why, yes, people might say, well, he actually was there, he was there, whatever, but I'm glad I learned. I'm glad I wake up. I'm not gonna keep like this, my former colleagues will wake up. Okay, because all of the things that they said about the P L F N M P in the past hasn't changed and it's gotten even worse. So people, I love you and thank you for your support. My car, I'm gonna be there, I love you.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, you have heard from Mr. Jermaine Hicks. Mr. Jermaine Hicks is an outstanding, he was an outstanding perspective. And um, this is someone that we strongly believe that would advance the movement um, for the Coalition of Independence and not only the movement, but brain change. So without further ado, I know he jumped the gun and he said, which constituency? You know, that was supposed to be a surprise. But ladies and gentlemen, I would like to officially introduce to you the ratified candidate for the constituency of Mike Hall. Thank you so much. Give him another round of applause, please. So ladies and gentlemen, as we continue on. Again, my um lovely host also spoke about someone, um, Mr. Valentino McKenzie. Mr. Valentino McKenzie, now I know y'all don't know which constituency he is being ratified for. I'm glad y'all don't know. But ladies and gentlemen, I am going to call Mr. Valentino McKenzie up. He's going to share a brief uh message with you and um we're going to move forward with the ratification. Don't tell them, please.
The constituency that I will be ratified for would be the constituency that both the T L B and the F N M have neglected. I would like to thank the people from that constituency who encouraged me to step forward and to be here today because I was unsure whether or not I wanted to step forward, put myself in the public light and they encouraged me to tell me to step forward, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Mr. Valentino McKenzie, the official ratified candidate for the great constituency of St. Barnabas. So ladies and gentlemen, um, Mr. Bean, if you would like to come up, please. So ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we officially ratify Mr. Valentino McKenzie, candidate for the great constituency of St. Barnabas and Mr. Jermaine Hicks, candidate for the great constituency of Mike Hall. We endorse, we believe in these men and we send them forward with full authority under the banner of the Coalition of Independence. This is an assignment, a mandate, a call to action to our newly ratified candidate. Where this was, thank you so much.
Yeah. All right.
So ladies and gentlemen, again, please give our candidates a round of applause. We want to guide you both and strengthen you in this mission. We are a team and we are here for one mission and that is the journey to the new Bahamas. Once we understand the vision, we can understand the mission. People are depending on us and they are counting on us to do what is right and what is necessary. Time for the new Bahamas. So ladies and gentlemen, now we are here for the big reveal. Every day with the Coalition of Independence is a learning experience. And we can see the growth out of all of us as we continue to move forward to the new Bahamas. Before um we go further, I would like to bring up our deputy leader, Doctor Veronica McGyver. She's going to share a few words with you.
Just before our deputy leader, our beautiful deputy comes up. Oh, thank God it's in the fabric of everything that we do. It's about all of my excitement because I'm gonna take it, we did not pray. So we go open in prayer, we're gonna ask our eloquent member of Parliament. Oh, I'm sorry, and those of you who are connected to the internet, if you don't mind, if you can disconnect so we can have a flow of the internet because you know how this thing go. We need the power, the flow and the internet to flow as best as possible so that those are in our viewing audience can see it without static and all of that kind of stuff. So if you could just come on, please, we'd appreciate it. And we're gonna bring our eloquent Mr. McQueen, our member of Parliament for the Nassau Village constituency. If you don't mind, can we walk stand? And as we do that, I am just gonna give you a little announcement as well. The funeral service for the brother, our brother and father, sorry, the brother and father of Stephen McQueen, Nassau Village candidate will be, the same Mr. McQueen who was coming up, will be Saturday. It's coming Saturday, the thirteenth of December twenty twenty five at Bible Truth Ministries off Calpin Road at two P M. So we're asking everybody who can, please attend. We wanna support our brother even as he is grieving. We know that God has him covered and protected and we believe that the peace of God that passes all understanding will rest in a Bible with him and his family. Mr. McQueen, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, good evening, everyone watching. Bow on a brief word of prayer. Eternal God in heaven, Father, you are the great I am, you are the all wise God. You are the only God. And Father, we give you praise, we give you glory for all of your great works and for your guidance of our lives and this movement. Father, we thank you for those who've just stepped up, Mr. Hicks and Mr. McKenzie to be ratified and to carry on the work, the fight for our country.
Yeah.
I ask oh God that you grant them strength, I ask oh God that you grant them wisdom. I ask indeed oh God that you continue to be with each candidate, all of our supporters and that you preserve us, you protect us and you go before us and surround us with all of your love, all of your power, all of your might. Father, take note the enemy, the enemies of this nation. Take note oh God of their plans, of their thoughts against us. And act oh God according to your will for the preservation of our people. Father, I pray oh God that you continue to bless this movement, taking us into the new Bahamas and that you will be glorified both now, then and forevermore. Father, I thank you for your love that you lavished upon us always. I ask oh God for your continued mercy, cause us to learn from any mistakes, to grow stronger, to develop wiser. Bless our leadership. Bless those oh God who pray for us, who might not be with us physically, but may pray for us, who have us in mind and heart and keep them. Pour a blessing upon our people so great, we cannot contain it. Pray oh God your blessings upon the continuance of this, this effort here tonight. This, what we are engaged in. Pray that you continue to guide us, we need you, we can do nothing without you. This is your hand of work, as you have promised. If we walk in your will, we will never forsake those who do so. Direct our steps, Jesus name my prayer.
Amen, you may be seated. And now words from our deputy chair, Ms. Veronica McGyver, the beautiful, the strong, the amazing. Veronica McGyver, thank you so much.
Good evening to everyone here tonight. I must say. I just want to take time out to say congratulations to the two new candidates. I heard your bio and I'm quite impressed and I know that you will do well. I am so happy that they are on board with us. This caravan is going to the new Bahamas. Now, sometimes it may not be an easy road to the new Bahamas. I think there're gonna be obstacles. We have hills to go over, we may have lakes to go through or whatever, but stay the course.
Yeah.
Um, there's a thing in the Bible that says, faith without works is dead. So what I want you to do is to have faith first and foremost, but you must also work. Because you can't just have faith and don't do any work. So you have to stay the course, you have to have your strategy in place, you have to work hard. Let me tell you something, you've got to put the time in. We have about six more months left. This is a fast paced dash for it and I just need y'all to hit the pedal to the metal and let's go, okay? Um, I just wanted to also touch briefly on Ira Lewis. I just wanna tell Ira Lewis, I know he's a free board, thank you for crossing the. For crossing the floor. And you know why I say that? That's why we are here today. Um, if it wasn't for Ira, we would not have had the knowledge that the Smugglers Bill was on the agenda for when it's taken. We know it was tabled in October, but a lot of us still did not know that. But by him being a parliamentarian, they would have had to have given him the information and he would have told us, imagine if he was not with us. That the first reading of that bill, and there's usually three readings before they vote, um, that, who knows, by December that bill would have been passed, but you know what? We serve a mighty God. And that God had Ira to cross the floor for such a time as this. Yes, and I, I believe that Ira circumvented what could have been a disaster for our history.
Yes.
That being said, let me take the opportunity to thank our leader, Mr. Lincoln Bay. As you know, Mr. Lincoln Bay was made for this dispensation. Whether you like it or not. Whether you like it or not, he was made for this dispensation. We have a government. Now, this is my opinion. This government almost operates mafia style, a lot of corruption. And so, and so you need a person like Mr. Bayne to fight that system. I thank Mr. Bayne, and I support him 1,000%. I can't think of no one else at this time who could take that charge for this system that we have in place now. Now, I want, I know before we get into the meat of the town hall meeting, we're gonna be talking about the Smugglers Bill, but I wanted to lend my contribution before they get into the meat of it, because when I read it, I read it as a layman, a citizen. I'm not an attorney. I just read it. And when I was reading it, for the first maybe like 10, 15 paragraphs, I was like, okay, what's the big deal about this bill? Everything seems normal. So I agree with 90% of it, but when I got to one part, that part bothered me so much, I say, you know what? I have to speak out on this. Listen, the part that bothered me the most was when they said they wanted to get definition. A company is a secret plan of agreement between two or more persons to do something harmful, illegal, or wrong. Let me give you a couple examples. You have a drunk dealer. He comes to shore, he offloads his, um, um, with the stuff that he has, and he gave it to someone to sell for him. They conspire to disseminate those drugs. Two should be charged. You may have somebody who have a bad check, him and another person. They wrote a check. They know that that account doesn't exist at the bank. But yet they went to a store, and they tried to buy something. Two of them are just culpable, the same amount. And the last one that everybody could, could understand and affiliate with is if you're gonna do a robbery. One goes in the store with a gun or whatever he has to do. One is caught in getaway car. Well, both of them are culpable, both of them are liable, and they conspire together. So under normal Bahamian law, anyone assisting or encouraging or participating in an illegal act is part of the conspiracy. Charging only one person in a conspiracy is inconsistent with Bahamian principles. Now, you may ask, well, what is the backlash if this bill goes through as is with no changes? I wrote down three things. One, it'll be a safe landing spot for a lot of migrants. Two, let me tell you what it'll do. It'll accelerate illegal migration, in my opinion. And the third, believe it or not, it will incentivize migrants to attempt the journey. Because if you know you get to a place, and if you know they catch you, but you're not gonna be charged, you're not tempted. They're gonna clothe you, feed you, give you medical care, and then send you back. And they'll probably pay to send you back. What you got to lose, you know? Nothing to lose. Now, don't get me wrong. I know that there are some people in here who are familiar with human rights and the United Nations. I get it. We have to be compassionate for migrants. We believe in giving them food, shelter, healthcare. We do that now in the detention center. Okay? But humanitarian care does not have to mean no accountability. And another thing too, in a small island state like the Bahamas, why are they even contemplating words like asylum or whatever? We are not like America, Europe. Those countries are first world countries. They have a lot of resources. We are a third world country. We cannot sustain asylum in a great amount. Maybe in one or two cases, perhaps. I don't have a problem with that. But in a massive way, we cannot sustain that. And so we, like I said, the Bahamas has a special fingerprint. You cannot put us in the same category as those big countries like America and Europe. It cannot be done. So as I close, I want to address the Attorney General, but I'm sure my leader, and I'm sure Sean Gardner, they will address the Attorney General, but I wanted to do it personally myself. I submit that this bill, in its present form, is incomplete. It's imbalanced, and it's inconsistent with the principles of justice. It inadvertently creates a partnership between the migrant and the smuggler. One where the migrant is rebranded as a victim, while the smuggler bears all the blame. We should hold all parties accountable when they conspire to break the law. That principle must not be abandoned today. I urge the Attorney General to amend this law to restore fairness, uphold our sovereignty, and protect the Bahamian people from the unintended and the very consequences that will follow if we allow this loophole to become law. I cast my case.
Thank you so much to our, thank you so much to our deputy leader. And of course, we have capable people. I want you to, first of all, if we can check our phones, and if we can please put them on silent or vibrate. We'd appreciate that, doing some station identification. And also, could you please check your phones again and make sure that you are not on the Wi-Fi? We'd appreciate that as well, because this next segment, we don't need any hiccups or anything. All segments were important, but this one, we don't need any hiccups, distraction, anything in this segment. So please, take out your phones and check, and let's just make sure, not that I don't trust you. Let's just make sure, because we have the evidence at the right of me, your left, that you are not connected to the Wi-Fi, and we've done our job, okay? Um, now we're going to have the conversation. The conversation of this bill that they didn't want the Bahamian people to know that was going to be passed, and we are thankful for again, a member of parliament, who is who, who did what he has to go. And like I said before, it is for God first and for country. There is no I in this. There is no me. There, if you have to be the sacrificial lamb, then so be it, because it is again for God and for country. So right now, we're going to invite three, I mean, amazing people who are going to talk and who are gonna share and who are gonna educate us about what is happening, what we need to do as Bahamian people to stand up, stand out, be strong, and not alter under the guise and the stuff that they would want to project to you, to tell you that this is, I don't know if you noticed, and I'm going to say this, it's my opinion. When they talked about it, and they were bashing, why, why do you have to read from a script if you know what is happening in this bill? Why are you so nervous? And I mean, the person was so sweaty, I, I thought, I didn't know if they had on the air conditioner, what was happening. You, it seemed as if you were very nervous, but the Bahamian people are not blinded anymore. We are not ignorant people anymore that you thought we were, because you know something? People just didn't stand up, and they didn't want to ruffle any feathers. But we will ruffle every feather. We will stand up. We will stand up in the parliament. We will stand up in the courts. Your home if we have to, because we are walking into the new Bahamas. What are we walking into? What are we walking into? And that starts now, and it's something our national chairman always said. You know, people often say the Bahamas is finished, and this is Narnia, and all that kind of. Your words are powerful. Your words take on, listen, they take on form, and they go to accomplish. The Bible says the word go to accomplish. That's what you set it out to do. So right now, we speak of the Bahamas. It's not a third world nation. The Bahamas is a first world nation. That our people are strong, and that we are coming together, and we are together as a first world nation who believes and who will stand up for truth, who will stand up for honesty, and who will stand up for the justice for the Bahamian people all around. And we stand strong with our leader. We stand strong with our deputy leader, and we stand strong with our national chairman, who will stand up. Listen, they stand up, they go to jail, they don't care. They still are there, some of them. But we stand with them, and we're not gonna allow them to go alone this time. We're going hand in hand, and we want to welcome also Mr. Brian Roll, who did an exceptional job. He's still rolling the phones. He's still rolling, we're rolling. We encourage you in TV land, on social media platforms. If you have not registered to vote, please, go and register. Go and register to vote. Yesterday, we were walking, and a lot of people said that they haven't registered. We need you to go and register to vote. Your, your little ink, your little whatever, it counts. It counts. If we're going to change this country, we need you to go, and we need you to do the job. Like our, our deputy leader said, faith without works is dead. We can speak, and we can talk all we want, but if you don't get up and you don't go and do what it is that you need to do as a people of this great country, then we would be back to the same place. And we don't need to be back to the same place. We don't need to make a 360. A lot of people get that mix up. We don't wanna make a 360. We wanna make a 180. We want to go to a place that we've never been before. We want to go to the promised land, and we are walking into that promise even now. So again, if you haven't checked your phone, to make sure you're not on the Wi-Fi, please do so. Take out your pens, your papers, your phones, go in your notes, and let's take notes to know what it is that we are saying to the people about this asylum bill. And who is going to come on the stage to join me right now? The incorporeal, the warrior, Ms. Maria Daxson. Who's always fighting, who's always fighting for the Bahamian people, always, a beautiful princess. And also Mr. Sean Gardner, A.K.A. Blackmail. And he's going to join us. And you know, the man of business, the man with the information, the man who always educates us every day, every week, and sometimes late and early in the morning to get that clean thing thing of what is happening and what is going on. Our leader, our president, Mr. Lincoln McCoon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for turning out in good numbers so that we can together educate our Bahamian people. Ladies and gentlemen, our country is in a serious crisis. A serious devastating crisis. We've been saddled with an immigration crisis for far too long now, and it's time for us to fix this. Every nation has its borders, and every nation has to secure its borders. Every nation has its sovereignty, and every nation has to safeguard its sovereignty. It is a matter of national security, and we have to, we have to protect it. Now, first of all, I want to congratulate those candidates who were here today. I'll start with Mr. McKenzie, who's going on to St. Barnabas, to take that away from Shannon on Todd, right?
Shannon on Todd, I just started ready running. So that would make it a little bit easier for me. I don't know where he's going. Ready, stay, or go. We want St. Barnabas to go black. He, of course, is a, a computer expert like myself. We've attracted so many of them, people with all kind of computer degrees to look right for the Bahamas. Definitely be a futuristic country moving forward. And if we have qualified people leading the charge to take our country where all other countries are going. So many countries around the world are moving forward. Us is moving backwards. Come on, man. When you have a nation like Haiti building freeways, and we can't even passport hoes, we're going backwards. And so we gotta fix this nation, and that's what we're gonna do, and we have the qualified people to do so. And guess what? No, they are not the typical names that you know from politics who've been ruining this country all these years. These are persons who are qualified Bahamians who want to make a change. And so Bahamians have a decision to make. You can stay with those people who have been destroying this country, you know? You can stay with these names that you know about and, and let them keep destroying this country, or we could try something different. I think it's time for something new. Man, I'm talking about develop a lot of software in the Bahamas. The software that Bahamas spoke is on, he developed that software. That's correct, right? Yeah, yes. And so he's a very qualified, very, very qualified person. We're looking forward to transforming our nation and making this a e-nation. An e-nation where you don't have to go in line for anything in this country anymore. You can, the police can, when they, when they pull you over, or if you have to pull you, they can run your plates, and they can tell if, if your car is licensed. They can tell if your car is insured. They don't tell you, give me insurance. They already, they should already know. And so we're gonna have a one system that's gonna deal with all of this stuff. We're gonna have one card that can deal to transform this nation. Of course, that's, that's for another, I'm, I'm sitting in another event, but we are gonna transform this nation. We have the qualified people to do so. So my brother, welcome aboard. Welcome to the new Bahamas. I also want to welcome someone I've known since I was in my early twenties, or probably even a teenager. I don't even remember. Mr. Jermaine Hicks. This, Mr. Jermaine Hicks, he's a businessman. He has done a lot of business in China, et cetera, et cetera, in the Bahamas all around the world. And so he's a qualified gentleman. He, he goes to Michael and North to do business, and so he's seen the changes that needs to happen there. And, um, um, he's decided to put himself forward. And he's ran for the, the DNA in the last election. I think he had their best campaign going. He's a very disciplined man with a very good campaign. His campaign was better than a, 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 to be honest with you. Yeah, his, his, that's one of the DNA executives in the background, former executive saying, oh yeah. He had a very, very impressive campaign. And so we think that he is, is gonna bring a lot to this party, very intelligent, and a man who, who has a lot of integrity. All right? And so, my brother, welcome aboard. Welcome to the Bahamas. And so with that said, ladies and gentlemen, we got some work to do today, all right? So thank you all for spending your evening with us. But this, there's no more important place than you could be today and right now, because they are trying to destroy our nation. They are trying to sell this nation out, and we gotta fix that. It's very important what we're gonna do today, all right? So let's take some time, but there are a lot of Bahamians on here right now, watching from all over the world, and they wanna know what's going on. And that's why I brought one of our attorneys in our party, just Maria Daxson. And y'all know she don't play, right? And I brought a man that I respect very much. He's able to break down the law for the Bahamian people. And so it makes my work a lot easier. And so I brought Mr. Blackmail. And so, once, once I have turned it over to Mr. Blackmail to show today, it will be contributed, all right? All right. So get on the lap. Ready? Ladies and gentlemen, I, I just want to say before we get started, um, I had an interesting meeting, uh, an intentional meeting with Michael C. Penta today. Okay, I'm too excited. I am coming over, well. We don't want no one who's a part of it, bro. No, I ran into him in the food store today. I think I ever seen him in the food store today. Running in the food store. That's where I met him. I already have a message when I see him. Sorry, I'm there. Okay, okay. I didn't see you, but I ran into him three times. I was following this young man, following me. And so I was walking, we had, the parking boys always, you know, they come with me to help me shop and that kind of stuff, but I tip them heavily. That's how I get back every week. And so they come and they pick up all the stuff for me and make sure I'm straight. And so we passed Mr. Penta. And so I decided to meet the man. I hear you live first. It's God say you got here leaving your enemy. That's what I pray at night, man. So I said hello to him, and he started, he wasn't looking. He started to say hello, and he saw me, his whole continent has changed. And even the parking boy noticed that. His whole continent has changed. And so I said, hey, how you doing? And he just, he just looked at me. I said, I said, Penta, why don't you say something about that asylum bill? You all ready for the answer? You all ready? You all sure you're ready? I said, why aren't you saying anything about this asylum bill? He said, because that's our bill, that Philip R. Davis is trying to take credit for. And when we get in, if they don't pass it, we can pass it. If I was the island, the island goods, I might have got in trouble. But I think I stood the right side. No, but on a serious note, that really disturbed me. But guess what? He's right. They were the ones who brought this bill forward, Minister Penta cabinet, in 2018. That was their bill, that asylum bill. And they have the reason, you notice how they're not saying anything, right? The reason they're not saying anything is because them and the P L F working together. He loves one to bring it or the other one to bring it. I walked off and left them. We ended up fucking again to another aisle. And he said, I thought, he thought I have some choice virtually. He thought I had to say, I entered that in, freaking out, let me just make. I don't want to, you know, just bear attack it. I see some strange things happening. All right. I just want to make sure I'm still pushing. Okay, so I hope, I hope it's doing well. Okay. Looks like it's doing well. All right? So, but ladies and gentlemen, I decided to just let him, you know, talk and say what he had to say, and I walked off and I left. The parking boy was like, wow, he's angry. I can understand. They know their time is short. But ladies and gentlemen, I say that not to bring him up again. I say that because I want you to understand that what Mr. Hicks said is right. He calls them the P L F and M B. But that is the truth though. When the F N brought this bill, the P L B did not object to it. R. Davis was the office leader. They did not object to it. The F N, because of, because of us and other persons speaking out, they couldn't do it anymore. And so when they did, and see, that's from 2018, come here. They don't care, you know. They trying to outlast us. They didn't think COI would still been around. They didn't think Lincoln Bill still been around. And so that's from 2018. And so they waited. And then they came with a power, and then the P L P announced that they was bringing it back. They said they bringing it back, but they could separate asylum part. And then they came and brought one, not a funny bill, and brought asylum in it, and we had the protest on Boston Square. And they pulled back again. They tried to even say that there was no bill. They don't know what we talking about. Remember that? They placed that. And that shows you that you can't trust them. And then they came back, and they tried to put this bill while we were all busy campaigning. On October 15th, they just came with a consortium of bills and just tabled the bills. That was slippery, because what happens every week is, it's in order so that we can have one policy and we could assist and do whatever we have to do. I don't know if it would send whatever bills are gonna be dealt with on that day, and I say he would send it to me and to other astute persons in our party, especially depending on what the bill is about. And then we would come together and see, you know, what we're gonna put forward. When he sent, but he sent those to me, you know. It was a consortium, we were busy, didn't see it. And so they decided they were gonna debate it. Today is already tabled. That was, that didn't even, no one paid attention. They decided to start debating it, and they could have debated that and passed that the same day, Wednesday. And that was the plan. And let me tell you something, I don't sleep. I was exhausted, tired, trying to rest, because I have no rest on my body every day. Every day, people still got me everywhere. And I was laying down, I was, Lord said, no joke. I went, I started to look at the bill. Okay, this is my smallest bill. I read through the first part of it. And many people know you gotta keep reading. They like to hide it in the box, but they know we don't like read all. And so I started to read through it, read through it, read through it, read it. Then I saw this funny word, non-refulment. And when I saw non-refulment, I said, hold on, I remember this from law school. Thank you. Oh, this, I remember this from international law. And European Union studies, to be exact. So, well, this word, I've never seen this in our law. And I said, what's going on here? And I started repeating, and I saw what they were doing. And then I started to see the, you know, another. I said, this bill, word, non-refulment, that's a curse word, because that is a curse of Bahamas. That will be a curse on our people and our nation. Non-refulment is a curse word. You see that in our law. The reason is because we are surrounded by countries with billions of people. If Cuba, Cubans hear this bill is passed, and they decide to start, even while they're in international waters, they're able to just come to the Bahamas, because their intention was to come. I'm sorry, the law changing it too. All right? Not just in Bahamian waters, in international waters, before they get here. They could go and brag to them, say, hey, come, you're safe and great. All right? And so that's the problem. And so that woke me up and made me aware that that we in trouble. All right? I'm gonna, I just wanna, just bear with me for one second. I want to show you these diabolical people. Fred Smith, Ruby George, and these others went to the U N and lied on our nation. All right? They went to the U N and lied on our nation about what was happening here. And I want to show you that. See, the Bahamian people need to see them in action. I got a video of them lying on our nation. And David and Gomez had to go before the U N, from the after the government, and say, you had these people lying. This, this what they saying, that they happened in the Bahamas. I mean, they lie. Treasonous statements about the Bahamas to the U N. Said to the government, if you all mess with them, we're gonna take you seriously. Woman said it. Touch them. Because this is a human rights situation. But then people don't care about human rights. They care about Haitian rights. And they care that they want anarchy in this country. And we have to stand up for this nation. I'm gonna play this. I'm gonna try to play it and fast forward so we can go quickly, but I want you to hear them. Fred Smith went there, put another Haitian man, Fred Smith thought, and then the Haitian man thought, and then David Gomez had to come and say, but I got the pictures, I got everything here, they lying. And that's the only reason they was able to be stopped. Because remember, first it was the P L B going after them, not a P L B partner into that. All right? To make money. I want you to watch this. Give me, just bear with me. I've never played it like this before. But just bear with me as I try to put this on the big screen so you can see it and so the Bahamian people can see it. Because this is troubling. All right? Make sure y'all sitting, everyone, yes, sitting on, right? Okay, don't blame me. And so, after this, the U N even came over to have a symposium, a seminar for our people. And it started with the seminar, before I start with them. They came over here to tell us what we should know and what we shouldn't do. And this happened before your eyes, and they're seeing it too. Yeah? Let's go.
The United Nations High Commission for Refugees is hosting a four-day training program here in the Bahamas at the Port Farneson Center.
And those Jarricks.
With so many immigrants coming to our shores, some fleeing their own land for safety reasons, the United Nations Refugee Agency wants to ensure that the Bahamas has a proper mechanism in place to deal with asylum seekers. That group is hosting a training seminar tackling the complex issues of statelessness, asylum seekers, and those looking for refugee status. Heading the U N team is Simone Schwartz Delgado, who says because of our geographical location, mainly Haitian and Cuban refugees come here. She hopes the conference will assist authorities in dealing with those groups.
We are looking forward to working with the Bahamas as it is a state party to the 1951 Convention on the Status of Refugees to concretely implement the provisions and enhance the processing and the treatment of refugees in the Bahamas through this course, but also through ongoing technical advice and regulation.
The 1951 U N Convention relating to the status of refugees outlines the rights of individuals who are granted asylum and the responsibilities of nations taking part in that process. Mr. Stephen LaRota, Chief Immigration Officer in the Refugee Unit, says that his division is guided by the protocols set out by the United Nations.
It's a basic protocol. We follow the protocol as laid out by U N E C, the 1951 Convention and the 67 Protocol, that enables us to, it gives us the tools to be able to use to identify those migrants and to determine who is a migrant in need of protection or migrant who is economic or otherwise.
Now, Mr. LaRota says that his department is not overburdened, but they are challenged out of approximately 120 applications per year, about 15 are granted asylum. Jarricks said, and that's not worth.
Ladies and gentlemen, did any of you know, know that they are giving asylum to people already? They ever talked about that on the news? Did they get permission from us? Is there any law? There is no law. So how could they be doing something where they are not empowered by the law? You didn't even know this. They just come talk this, because the U N come and the U N was there sitting now. But they've been giving out asylum. This was 11 years ago. This was 11 years ago. They've been giving out asylum in our country, even though there's no asylum law. You see what's going on? Now, I'm gonna play this, and then we're gonna get started. I'm gonna see if I can fast forward it, so it's gonna be fast talking, okay? Because I just wanna go through very quickly. What you about to see was where they went to the U N, and they presented this demonic book with all the lies and deception, and showed the Haitians getting beat from alleged Bahamian immigration officers. But the truth is, they were not immigration officers in the Bahamas, and many of these pictures did not take place in the Bahamas. They lied and deceived them. All right? And so if you look in this book, it's kinda beat up now, onto this book, our immigration didn't even have no dogs. And they showed them, talking them with dogs. They showed a fella getting beat. Our immigration don't dress like that. All right? They showed, they even showed, I don't know why they showed him in there, but they showed the bear with bonded. All right? They showed, this is Fred Smith and these other people, and I keep showing people crying. All right? I don't know why they showing them crying. Must see a copy they live in this country. They showed the police, the immigration officers breaking into this person's house, that ain't no house in the Bahamas, and that ain't no Bahamian immigration. Why would they do something like this? They went and lied on this country, Blackmail. Yeah? They lied on this country. You see? They lied on this country. They showing them in victory, the Fred Smith and them. See? And this Fred Smith gone quiet. They quiet, because they, they working with brave death. And they trying to get Penta in place, so they don't have to worry about the car. All right? They showing them all these bad situations. I just wanna show you quick. The one where they show a picture of a little child being abused, and this was actually a child who was in a car accident. Nothing to do with immigration situation. And the child had some cancer in their face, and they tried to make it seem to got immigration, was doing this kind of stuff to people. All right? I want you all to see the picture. You go to it. This book, these books done disappear now. I know they don't know how I get a copy of this. We always get the documents, right? We always get it. Only God making sure we get it. Yeah? Child with a face all busted up. This was a child in a car accident in the Bahamas. And they showed, they put up a chin there to make it seem like, like that's what the immigration do to this poor little child. That's it. They not deserve to be in this country. And there's another one with a child, this woman all busted up and bloody up. All right? In front of people with this police sign and the shields, the clear shields. We don't do that here. But that's what they put out there to the people. All right? So another child, all busted up, see? You see? Same child? Yeah. All busted up. Who picture the same child? As if that's what our people do. See what they put the words they said? You have to be treated respectfully. They put it in pre-old too. You have the right to be treated nicely. And then they showed this picture of this child with a face all busted up. That's the kind of demons we dealing with. All right? So I just wanted you to see that. So now I'm just gonna think, if I can speed it up, but I want the Bahamian people to see this before we start telling you what's really going on and what the law is. Right? And Blackmail is gonna lead on that, like Maria talking, and Maxman is gonna take the lead on this. All right? This, many years ago, under the Perry administration, Fred Smith, Ruby, and all of them went to the U N to talk about the devastating crisis that immigrants was going through in the They even went there, published this, hand this out to them, told a lying report. You know? They did tell stories of Haitians getting slapped and that kind of stuff. But Bahamians get slapped. Police slap Bahamians. All right? That don't mean that there's some crisis with that. Men believe that they get discipline. Many instances. Then it happens in the U S, you know. And so they, when they tried to make it look like that was the norm, they tried to prove these pictures, painted a different picture of what was really going on. So let's play this, so we could get to where we need to get. I'm gonna fast forward a bit. I'm gonna cut out this first person from the U N, and then he introduced Fred Smith, okay?
To further elaborate on the human rights situation faced
To further elaborate on the human rights situation faced by migrants in this country. Thank you very much, Wade. Uh, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for entertaining us this afternoon and allowing us to shed some light on the serious human rights issues uh, that are occurring in the Bahamas. The new policy leads to discrimination against persons of African and specifically Haitian descent. These are estimated at between sixteen to twenty percent of the population, by far the largest ethnic group. For decades, Bahamians have been encouraged, often tacitly and at times openly, to regard many of the country's social challenges as resulting from the burden created by the influx of Haitians. It's called in the Bahamas as the Haitian problem. An anti-Haitian prejudice has become so deeply ingrained in Bahamian psyche that the terms undocumented, illegal, or Haitian have become synonymous. Since November, vast majority of the individuals deported without due process have been Haitians or Bahamian of Haitian descent. And the impact has been worsened by the government's decision to focus not on the source of illegal migration at our borders, but on established Haitian communities that have been in the Bahamas for decades. The Bahamas has a constitution, a good one, it has entrenched protection of human rights. The Immigration Act requires compliance with our Criminal Procedure Code and the observance of due process guarantees. Officers have the same powers as the police and no more. There is a presumption of innocence, the act provides for signed deportation orders on very strict conditions and the right to an appeal and very limited deportation detention. There is one legal prison in the Bahamas, and that is Tocil, under the Correctional Facilities Act.
Oh, sorry, accidentally touched it, I'm sorry.
There is a presumption of innocence, the act provides for signed deportation orders on very strict conditions and the right to an appeal and very limited deportation. Detention. And that is Tocil, under the Correctional Facilities Act. Detention Center, which you've heard so much about, does not exist anymore. Unfortunately, there has been a complete collapse in the observance of laws.
Just trying to get them to shut down the whole detention center. Saying it illegal, to shut that down, let the people roam free. Immigrants shouldn't be arrested, you could hear that from the first gentleman who was speaking, the stuff he was saying, that they should not be detained. Continue.
Many historical rulings to the contrary, declaring current practices illegal. The complete disrespect for constitutional rights has reached endemic and ubiquitous proportions. There is no legal aid, the justice is limited, language issues are a great barrier. The judicial system does not provide a remedy to the thousands who are having their rescues. Meanwhile, the government is portraying its actions as lawful, when in fact, the exact opposite is true. The enforcement procedures include mass raids, exercises, checks, roundups, roundups, and roadblocks, where civilians are made to show proof of their status on the spot and face detention and possible summary deportation. These violate the constitution. Many are detained despite possessing proof of status in the country. And we also know a Bahamian citizen who was detained and summarily deported recently. This aggressive approach has led to numerous cases of physical and emotional abuse. It has created a culture of suspicion, prejudice, and profiling, in which individuals' right to freedom of movement can be breached with impunity if they are perceived to be of Haitian origin. Raves are often conducted at night, homes are subjected to forcible entry, sometimes by heavily armed officers dressed in battle fatigues, striving to fear accidentally murdering Bahamian citizens. Those targeted often regularly have their property damaged or destroyed. Homes are unsecured and vulnerable to looting, and when occupants are detained, violence is often increasingly needed out for those who resist. Women and children are particularly vulnerable. In this initial series of raids, several small children discovered at home in the absence of their parents were taken into custody and held in the general population at the detention center without any special supervision. It took days for some of those children to be released to their parents subsequently. There is perhaps no aspect of this immigration policy which is more concerning than the further denial of children's right to attend school in fact, the constitution and all instruments. Starting in September, only children who will be allowed, the only children who will be allowed to be registered for school will be those who can show that one of their parents is Bahamian or a legal resident. Though the state has swatted in the eye that this amounts to an effort to drive children of undocumented Haitian migrants from the classroom when this is the inevitable result. Four persons born in the Bahamas to Haitian parents have been directed by policy and by law to obtain a Haitian passport and/or newly invented document called the Belongers Terminal. Last month, the government, in reaction to criticism that it is unlawful to govern by policy, began fast-tracking through parliament an amendment to the Immigration Act, which civil society has not had the opportunity to make comments on, nor have affected communities been given the opportunity to participate in. It seeks to establish a civilian immigration reserve force, which the minister may mobilize at his pleasure. It creates impediments to persons born in the Bahamas to obtain their constitutional right to citizenship. It creates impediments to travel abroad, even to Bahamian citizens. It provides for the establishment of a detention center outside the laws governing correctional facilities under the act. It now creates an offense of harboring an illegal person. It subjects an offender to imprisonment for ten years for providing housing, board, or shelter of any kind to an illegal person. The proposed new law actually culminates in the creation of a new species of person in the Bahamas to be known as, quote, "an illegal person," unquote. Now, in the Bahamas, a person is deemed illegal through administrative determination just by the immigration authorities, without charge, without trial, without conviction, and without sentence, i.e. what is now presumed guilty in the Bahamas. The immigration act has now become judge, jury, and executioner. The proposed amendments are unconstitutional, yet they will be passed, they will be enforced, and thousands of persons will continue to have their rights accused en masse. I will now ask my colleague Pierre to further elaborate on the effects of the immigration policy on the Haitian community.
Thank you. The Haitian community is very infected. They are infected of those laws both provide protection for them, they are infected of being mistreated, beaten, punched, slapped, and kicked by immigration officers. They are infected of it, it being taken to a detention center where they will surely experience cruel EU and illegal treatment. They are infected of their homes being wiped by the side while they are detained. They are infected of the children have been able to stray. They are infected of imported, imported to a country, they are not, not in fact. Members of my community express fear for my good meaning, because I'm speaking publicly about these issues before the commission, in the government today. Members of my community have told me about the Caracol Decision Center, where there, there is Haitian suffering. They experience verbal, physical, and psychological abuse. They have no clue what to do, to join, and no hope of dying, and it makes them sick. The drones are so overcrowded, and the people are forced to stay on the concrete floor, or even outside for protection from the elements. They have the opportunity for legal counsel, and no way to communicate with their families. Countries are very bad for women. One ninety-year-old attorney was forced to give birth on the detention center floor without the help of doctors. They are in poor sanitation facilities. There are also numerous people of sexual assault. Last year, a senior immigration officer was accused of taking a attorney out of the center to his home and marrying her mobility. In the meantime, an officer was accused of wearing a human woman in the center. Members of the community are supposed to be afraid that their children might be able to go to school because they will deny access if their parents have regular immigration status. This is a violation of a children's right to earn education. I say here, that as a Bahamian, not American, not Haitian, but as a humanitarian on behalf of humanity, not for any country. It only happened at the largest concentration group of Haitian nationals, and the behavior of Haitian itself. But the received mind might be affected by this government doing policies. Once again, I thank you for your attention to these issues. My colleague Diego would like to speak with you.
Good morning, commissioners, my name is Diego Antaram, the Deputy Director of the Caribbean Institute for Human Rights. We have been monitoring the situation of migrant groups in the Bahamas in recent years, and would like to call the attention of this commission to several areas of special concern. First, the commission has held that in the context of migration procedures, detention should be a measure of last resort, specifically under the American Declaration of Independence.
I, I want you to pay attention to the background. Have you seen me? You see him? Yeah, the devil right there, sitting in the back there. Yeah, the devil is right there. And in fact, he just tuned in on, on, on Facebook, so he's watching right now. Alright, so, uh, Luby George is watching, and that's him, right there.
States are bound to implement immigration laws and policies that are premised on the presumption of liberty. Immigration detention should only be applicable in exceptional circumstances for the shortest period of time, and alternatives to detention should be sought whenever possible. The principle of exceptionality carries a bit more weight when children are involved. Under international standards, unaccompanied minors should never be detained. However, as discussed, the migration policy is priority to detention, which has disproportionate effect on vulnerable persons. Additionally, in the Bahamas, the risk legislation and implementation criminalizes the status of migrants. We're also concerned with the lack of appropriate procedures for screening of persons in need of international protections. Both the Inter-American Commission and court have reiterated that international law requires states to implement effective safeguards to protect individuals with a legitimate claim for refugee status, asylum seekers, those at risk of ripple mob, and persons at risk of statelessness. Because there are no effective and consistent refugee status determination procedures, it is possible that the migration policies are also affecting persons in need of these protections. As investigated, the conditions on Carmichael expose all persons that drive for their liberty to cruel, inhuman, and degrading treatment, the lack of profits. In conformity with this commission's principles and best practices on the detection of persons that drive for liberty in the Americas and the lack of access for international and national organizations to monitor these conditions are just two of the many factors that increase the pain of the persons at this facility. The recent changes to the migratory policy may also infringe on the right to the Bahamian nationality and may also put some at a risk of statelessness. Under Article Seven of the Constitution, a person born in the Bahamas with parents of foreign nationality shall be entitled upon application on his attaining, attaining the age of eighteen or within twelve months thereafter to be registered as citizens of the Bahamas. We have gathered information indicating that among the population that have been targeted, detained, and deported, some had a constitutional right to be registered as citizens. And others have submitted the necessary documentation for registration, but we're still waiting for the government to register them as citizens. It must be noted that there is a backlog of thousands of applications, many of which have been neglected for years or even decades. Additionally, the Bahamas is only one of two countries in the Western Hemisphere that develop adult women, and in some cases, men, to convert nationality onto their children, thereby increasing the risk of detention, deportation, and statelessness. Finally, human rights defenders in the Bahamas are confronting a hostile environment that put their security, their security and work at risk. Members of our delegation have been threatened for expressing their opinion against the recent changes in migration policies. Also, high-level government officials have made expressions against them, minimizing their work, and even depicting it as alarmist and inflammatory. They have also threatened Mister Smith and Mister Darrow with charges of criminal libel and sedition. Members of the media have raised retaliation for being critical of the government, including our colleague Luby George with us today, whose long-running radio show, The Phil Connection, which is canceled days after the Immigration Minister called for an investigation and comments critical of the government, of the government, on the government that were made on his show. We are extremely concerned with a recent Facebook post. The Press Cultural Affairs and Information Manager of the Bahama, of the Embassy of the Bahamas in Washington D.C., with
Oh, I don't want you to miss. The gentleman, uh, I'm trying to wrong things. Sorry for me. The gentleman right behind him, the light-skinned fella right there with the glasses, that's Paco Lunets from the Tribune. He was a part of their organization, he is a part of their organization. So the Tribune would be used to, to spread their nonsense. And at that time, he was working all about with the F and M, because they was in power. And then when they switch all of a sudden, he became P S P. But that's Paco Lunets from the Tribune, he was the, one of the senior reporters down there.
Said on March eighteenth that he intends to use every resource he has to go forward and press possible criminal charges against the delegation that sits here for you today. The rules of this commission, for your eyes, are engaging in actions of retaliation against human rights defenders, but also international human rights framework requires states to prevent violations against freedom of expression and specifically impose a duty to protect and guarantee the rights of human rights defenders to do their work. In conclusion, we respectfully request this commission to conduct an unsophisticated to the Bahamas so they can gather direct testimony and information on the migration policies and its effects. Include the information presented today in this annual report. Continue monitoring the situation in the Bahamas. Assist the Bahamas in designing and implementing a training protocol on human rights for state agents, including the role of and the protection of human rights defenders. We also request from the government of the Bahamas to revise this migration policy in order to guarantee that it is compatible with the state's obligations under international human rights law. Stop the arbitrary arrest, detention, and deportation until migration policy is aligned with international law. Ensure that my immigration detention is used as a last resort, and that particular needs of women and children are taken into consideration. Allow independent international monitoring at Carmichael. Ensure that the right of children to earn education is not dependent upon the migration services of the parents. Engage with civil society in a constructive dialogue to jointly address the problems that affect the Bahamas, and finally, address the inequalities in its nationality loss in order to reduce the risk of statelessness. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I hand over, I would like to make corrections. I, I appreciate now that the Honorable Minister is Minister of State for Legal Affairs of the Bahamas and not the Foreign Minister. I want to show you that I have no powers to reshuffle the cabinet, so you remain the Honorable Minister of State. But I also feel it necessary to pick up on something that the petition has said in relation to possible threats, and to just reiterate that at this commission, we, we declare that our rules and our rules does not, would not tolerate any revisers or acts of intimidation against any petitioners or any persons who appear before us, and we have had on occasions in the air in this state this publicly. So we say it again, um, just for the benefit of all concerned, and this is certainly something that we would take seriously, if, if it does happen. Having said that, um, I now turn over to the states for their presentation.
So in other words, if after they didn't come and lie in this country like they did, if you all actually locked them up or touched them, uh, you in trouble. Before it is a national criminal court probably. Um, but in any event, we will deal with you. So in other words, uh, don't touch them. No one threatened to charge them into detention at any point, you ever heard that? No, no one threatened them in any way, alright? Only thing that happened was one minister in the House of Assembly didn't release some of their emails, but no one ever trapped them in any way. Penta was also a part of this group, and P P R, alright? Fred Smith and all of them, they do it. Yeah, I bet. This is maybe in America, it's a big part of the action.
My name is David Gomez, I'm a member of Parliament for Central and South Houston. I'm also Minister of State for Legal Affairs. And if, and if it's not as deep that I appear before you today leading the delegation of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. At the outset, it is our distinct pleasure and my privilege to repeat the extension to the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights at the open invitation of the government of the Bahamas to visit the Commonwealth of the Bahamas at such times as are convenient to the commission and at such periods of notice as the commission means appropriate. This repeated invitation is substantive evidence of the Bahamas's commitment to its transparent adherence to democratic norms such as the rule of law and constitutionalism. We pride ourselves as an example to democracy in action and relish the opportunity to further engage in the wider international cooperation for the global achievement of universal adherence to the role of the enjoyment of human rights. It is also a great pleasure that we acknowledge the sterling academic reputation of not only you, Mad President, but other members of the commission. And it is in that capacity, as the regional academics and champions of human rights, that's an invitation that's extended to you at a personal level to forge relationships with other academics at the College of the Bahamas in its transformation to the University of the Bahamas. The deepening of regional sensitivity to human rights and the understanding thereof depends in large measure upon a vibrant intellectual debate across cultures and borders. It is our hope that the norms embraced by the Bahamas will have universal acceptance in our region irrespective of language, culture, creed, or legal system. Our appearance before you ought to be viewed not merely as a court or a commission appearance, confined as it were to four corners of the petitions, which is a strict subject matter of the theory. The general public are aware of these proceedings which are being streamed live on the internet. The general public are aware through press releases and public commentary emanating from at least one of the petitioners. And it is in that context that we regard statements made outside of the precincts of this hearing today, and in some way, inferentially drawn into this conversation this morning by the allegation that threats have been made against persons who appear before you. At the outset, let me say that the government of the Bahamas is not party to any such threats, though it is my duty to make reference to some rather outlandish and bizarre allegations which have been made about the Bahamas, which may well have colored some of the public statements private citizens may have made individually to members of the petitioners. And we stand ready to defend their right to free speech against the petitioners and those persons who would have expressed themselves to the petitioners. But the false baseness and malicious allegations made against the Bahamas and its people is deserving of a response. Our history of respecting human rights predates our independence. Indeed, our support of Haiti and its people in the attainment of economic, political, and social stability emanates from an, an avary that's unflinching belief in the dignity of our shared human condition. Madam President and most distinguished commissioners, it is a pain that I must refer to allegations written and spoken by one of the petitioners before you. They have as boldly as They have as boldly as the falsity of their allegation asserted that the government of the Bahamas has embraced fascism and Nazism in a targeted campaign to commit genocide against Haitian astronauts. They even maintain that there are concentration camps in the Bahamas and compared attention center to Auschwitz. These lies cannot be left unanswered. It is my solemn duty to protect the name and the reputation of our people. That really is the sole purpose of my attendance here today. Let not my good manners detract from the depth of outrage collectively felt by the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas at the defamation of our country. In sixteen forty-eight, the original English settlers of the Bahamas arrived to establish a free society in which they might practice their religion without lack or hindrance of the U.
I'm gonna end it there. You can go. For yourself. Um, you can search it and you'll see it. Um, put it up there so you can see. Oh, that's right. State of the Bahamas, human rights situation of immigrant persons in the Bahamas, migrant, right? Um, go and watch that and hear the demonism that was being done. This is a plan that overtimes slowly like the way oil and the frog, the national day would ask. And the PFP and F and M were working together only for that, alright? And Michael Pintad was one of the persons working along Fred Smith and that's who funded him. I don't want persons to think that, oh, being a serious immigration situation, get rid of brave them, go to Pintad, I think it would be better. It would be worse because this is his crew. This is his crew. Brave them making money, alright? They're coming to lie to people. They're making their money, alright? It's in their agenda. It was them fighting against these, this group, but now they're just making money off of it. But this, the F and M crew. Alright, even that the Tribune traveled with them. Alright, this is their crew. And Pintad said it was on month and he worked for Fred Smith there. Doing their PR, et cetera, et cetera. But he's probably the one who was behind getting this book designed. We gotta wake up. If we don't win this election, this country is over. But I want to stop there. I'll let Maria say her two cents and then I'll try to do the blackmail so we could get to the bottom of it.
Good night, my fellow babies. Before I move on to this bill. I never ever heard these things. I know that these persons went to United Nations. It's going on. A lot of false information.
Said that you had concentration camps. There was genocide going on. It's like, well, so it's.
My fellow babies, to the world at large and the United Nations. I'm a former police officer. I was one of the first police officers uh, that the human rights government took down to the intention setup. I worked here for five years. I don't know what camp they talking about. Because those things where they say what's happening, it never happened there in the house.
Also, they built a separate camp for over a million dollars. I don't even know about that. And, uh, in that's called Women and Children, et cetera.
Yes.
They built a separate camp, alright, over a million dollars. That, and it was, it was a building, a regular house with bunk beds and nice furniture and all. Show the pictures. I just like to stop it for a second then, what to be there? Go ahead.
That didn't happen there. He had to do proper patrol there. And Basel, the late Basel, he took us there. United Nations was calling for the government. And so we had to go down there. What they did, they took the defense force inside and the immigration officers was inside and they took a core police officer down there and we had to man that gate. We had to do the inspection to make sure no abuse was going on. I tell you those people that wasn't care or buy. Trust me, they were outdone. But they say that our people was doing that to them. It was a lie from the PFP. I don't know what country. Camp they talking about?
They told the UN that people are raped, that the Hemen immigration process was raping the women.
That you know truth because what happened to ours is that, I don't know what happened. Before I went there, we had to do the patrol. I was the one who had to do the patrols because Basel didn't say something to us. He said, I want five police woman down there. Every shit, our job was to go and check those women them out. Every hour, all the hour, I even had to walk the back gate. So I had to walk with those defense force because the defense force that was on the outside, we were on the inside. Guess they have a different cap, but not that detention, et cetera. I was there. I'm a living witness and anything got reported. We had to make note. And then I had altercation then, uh, with one of them. The female got a little scruffled because she came into the police queue. She start to fight me. That's on record.
Win the vote.
No comment. I have to go to the hospital once because some stuff had happened there, no comments. But they overlapped some boundaries because what happened? I mean, what you did, we had a separation, they had a separation part. They was to stay behind the gate. We were supposed to stay over there. Only time we walked through is to do the inspection. They couldn't overlap. Side, they couldn't overlap on the, they couldn't overlap on the police side and they couldn't overlap on the defense one. How was it? All these things happened. It, it couldn't work. And I would tell you, no, 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 even though they had it separate. They can, we had to do inspection three times a day. We always had a problem. You have five women missing, five man missing. Why you looking at me straight? Too high. Five women and five man. And the boss said, that's it. You need to go and find, and each five woman are. I said, I need them all to go with me. Take some place together. Having some intimacy. And that's what they used to do. They have a lot of that girl, and when you're coming in, you're pregnant. But we never knew and they tell we had to go and find them and they should go missing. And we have fifty eggs. We had a little lead, what, forty-five? And the boss said, no, we're not taking over. I tell you all, fine, if people I used to be in the back. You must kick down some doors because they ain't coming out. That was a lot of the issues that we had going on. What they said, it's all lies because I know what happened. It never happened now.
Right.
Now let me go to this bill. Oh, no, I always get something. New day. Davis smuggling bill. I follow the humans of the world at large. Lincoln after, you want to score me to do some hard research. That's the country they copy this bill from. Pakistan, the number one. Yet one in the Caribbean, but the difference is between the Caribbean, Lincoln, they have anti in the front.
What?
St. Kitts and St. Nevis. Two thousand and twenty-four. They copied this exact bill from them. I issued with this bill. And the new day PFP bill. It's that. They look at to protect the migrants. We, the Hemen people, we can't afford them. When you come here, we give you your medical care. You need to go back to the country that you born. You get a hospital, it's real, you know? We get our Hemen people suffering. I just know that this new day, this hit, and evil PFP, they're going to sit in our people's parliament. I think we made the law to protect these migrants. What about our people? We don't have no hospital, uh, machines, no medication. You talk to them, these people come here, we will treat them. That's how you keep your behaviors innocent. Unacceptable. My fellow Hemen, unacceptable. And for them. They're trying to sneak this law and Lincoln, you only because this is asylum, you know? They just changed the name to make it look like there's a new bill of smuggling. Mr. Ryan, I'm there. Attorney General, do me a favor, sir. Because they don't tell me, uh, you love this country like you're supposed to love this country.
It's America.
Uh, yeah. They tell you, you're two citizen. Do me a favor, go and check this law out. Uh? You need to pull back on some stuff in this law that is not beneficial to the Hemen people. Why you are just in putting up bill, the penalty? Why did you just legalize the penalties?
Or just amend immigration act?
Tell me to go on. But you know what? When PFP called me today and tell me, kid, you know what I like them? They say, that's it. I've been in court last week. They just hit off another captain with about fifty-eight thousand. The law is there. Uh, so why you want to put this extra law in here?
You want it.
Uh, why? All you all have to do is to add to the penalty. The three hundred, I'm not much you say, three hundred fifty thousand for penalty. My fellow Hemen, it's all better watch the law. I can write notes here again. Be a free set of immigrants coming into this country, Indians, Chinese, Asian, prophecies and African. When I talk about the Hemen countries, it's simple, get the money. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars fine. There's nothing for them Indians to pay.
No, right.
There's nothing for them Chinese to pay.
Right.
If they bring a hundred and there's people over here, captain say, soon as you get to shore, say you're honest, you've been done. I can pay the fine. So what that mean? You can have fifteen of them stay in this country.
Exactly.
Uh, the captain pay, the captain going, uh, after he pay that fine. What about, they gonna take a plane to pick them too. We, the Hemen people, want the PFP to kill a lot of this, force of this, leave the penalty here.
No, 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 no. A man, immigration act. We don't need nothing from that bill. Too much mix up in there. Leave that plan of this. We already have an act that deals with all of what they need. That's all we need.
Thank you.
We don't need that bill. Keep that. Throw that in the garbage. Burn that like how Fred Mitchell burned the constitution.
Oh boy. Babies, something that happened, my fellow babies. Did you read it, Lincoln, or, or, or? Did you read about it, talk for the, the law? Nothing? That law is what? It's a prison.
Yeah.
Uh.
Section thirty-five.
Thank you. My fellow Hemen, this is our constitution. This is in nineteen seventy-three. Uh, my lawyer wore my nineteen sixty-nine. This is the nineteen sixty-three. These are our laws here. And nothing. That piece of garbage what they talking about? This thing smuggling, this is garbage juice to compare our constitution. Uh? We want, you're looking, you say, killing it. I say, kill some of it. Kill the bill. Uh? You all, what you all want to do? No. And the brainies have gone. Jesus Christ. India have eighteen million people. Uh, what's this? India, the eighteen million people, young people over there get twenty million. China get how much million? You couldn't even imagine. You can imagine, Lincoln, if every year they realize that, okay, the Bahamas get a loophole. Do you know that? Or, or, or like the beyond. By the way, before I go, Lincoln, like when PFP tell me. It look like it was the Prime Minister. You tried to wipe it off. Wipe us all away. You tried to replace the sentence. That's what this is intentional about, you know? Replacing the Hemen people. You gonna make more of them. They live here and you're gonna be facing us out. We need to wake up and see clearly what is going on, you know? These Indians that get, they got the money. You see the Bay Street right now, where's Mr. Stunt? Stop, Jim? He'll tell you all the Indians, they're not taking over Bay Street.
You know that. You know that.
The Chinese, Lincoln, they coming here for these owners. You all think they playing it? Now, they got their patients. You know, they skip out when you call their names. You got them here now and they taking over. Mr. Prime Minister, let somebody say, why are you giving the big contracts to them? Five million dollars to try and buy. They can't see what's going on and they bringing their families, members in here in this country. And they're seeing them. Sir Ryan, I'm there. You know, let somebody tell me now, who draft that bill for you? Who draft that bill, Lincoln? We need to find who draft that bill. Who draft that bill? Unacceptable.
I don't think the people in the video.
No. I totally agree. We cannot allow this to happen.
I don't think they let them do it because they were afraid that it'd get out. And so they yelled, yelled that quote is whatever. Go ahead.
So, Hemen tonight, I agree, my leader. He say, kill the bill. See, because if you're all trying to sneak in these asylum and these refugees to come through the back door. Because they're coming through the front door no more, you know? PFP, shah. Mr. Prime Minister, when you go to the people's house, you get national issues. Go discuss the cost of living when you go to the people's parliament, our life. The road infrastructure, the hospital, the lack of, um, medication, lack of machines. Go and discuss that on behalf of the Hemen people. Sing this bill. Like Lincoln said, just sing it. I'll write, kill it. Because we have too much issues in this country for you to go in there and be thinking about the battle people who come in here. Unacceptable. That's my point tonight, my fellow babies.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria. Um, I just wanted to say that when your government sets out to lie to you, your country is in danger. And you have to wake up. The people, they went and had press conference and all of them lied. The first one, he was so sweaty and nervous, the tree ramming. And then, uh, Wayne Monroe came and just told a blatant lie that we needed the bill and everything was said already in the law. Only difference is, he said was that, uh, if they are smuggling people from the Bahamas to the US, for example, you, you couldn't arrest them. It's a lie. That's happened over and repeated on, on many occasions, alright? And so, and so, why are they lying to us? Then Attorney General came and said some nonsense about the bill not being able to do this and that. I'll play the video, but time is gone. The bill, uh, the bill will not, um, uh, stop them from being charged with legal entry or being here legally or having cause doctrine. That's a blatant lie. So bill is clear on that. Notice what all of them were doing. They were just saying what the bill say, but none of them would quote from the bill. So, none of them. One of them is saying, oh, the bills say this or the bill isn't going to do that, but none of them would quote from the bill. Alright, because they know Hemen probably won't read it and they would just, they expect Hemen to just listen to them because of who they are. They even use the, the, the media for their demonic purpose. Don't listen to these, uh, shows. They are being paid to deceive you. So are some people on Beyond the Headlines talking a bunch of lies and nonsense. Janine Miller say she read the bill and the bill don't say this, the bill don't say that. Now, how much, I want to know how much hours of law school Janine Miller has. They just send them to say this and maybe because you're a should be pillar, people will listen to you. And then they had cashes on there. No, no law experience, nothing. Um, another person's on there with no legal experience and all of them saying, oh, we read the bill and this is the good bill. This bill don't say this, don't say that. And all of them is preach saying what they are told to say. Don't let people who are against aid destroy your nation. They are thinking about today and not tomorrow. These shows are biased. And the first thing you want to do if you're one of the dictatorship or authoritarian country or fascist nation like they are, is you neutralize the media.
But why, all of a sudden, if you was lying and the people lying, why Mister Ben, they say he's gonna have to review it? Why, why? They say that they have to go back to the drawing board and look at some stuff. Why they say that now?
Everything I say always turns out to be the truth.
Thank you very much.
Always, over two decades, if I say it, it turns out to be the truth.
I agree.
If I say it, I can prove it, alright? They knew that what I was saying was the truth, they were hoping that they could spin the narrative, but it didn't work.
Thank you.
Because people then had read for themselves. And so now, I wanna stake another dive into this. And I brought, uh, Blackmail on to do it, because he's good at this. Blackmail, I want you to bring the accused before us, the accused is this asylum bill, don't call it no smuggling bill, that's not smuggling bill. It's a lie, be part of what it is, that's an asylum bill. He's accused before the people of this country, and we can bring him up and decide where he goes in the gallows or not. Or before the firing squad. I like the firing squad. The firing squad?
Yes, the firing squad.
Alright, you can put this, you can put this bill. The accused man, his, his name is Bill. And we are now gonna put him, uh, before the courts, and we're gonna lay out the charges before him. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, Blackmail, take it over.
Good night, Mister Lincoln, being included. All of the C O I membership, leadership, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Uh, I would so much feel. Bye, Mister Ben. First of all, you wanna tag Aaron Lewis. Aaron Lewis, contact Mister Benny. Mister Ben, contact Mister McKinney, Steve McKinney. Right? Mister McKinney then contact me, they'll call an emergency, see me here with the caucus. Patriots caucus. Now, let me put this disclaimer here, I am not here to represent the Patriots. I am here as an independent, Bahamian, Blackmail representing Sean Gardner. Right, so I accept, that's my statement, right? So what I say, Blackmail. If you want more information on this, I want you to listen, Van Estate. But I can try and give you all I can tonight, listen, Van Estate. Uh, corporation, Mister McKinney is our leader as it relates, uh, to the Patriots and the mission that we on. And the same mission that the C O I is on, to make sure that this country is governed right. It is governed properly, and there is something left for our Bahamian children, our grandchildren, all of us are on that same mission. And that is what is going to happen. This narrative that this country is gone, you all stop that right now. This country is not gone.
I got breath in my voice.
I couldn't help but to notice, um, the video that Mister Ben was playing. I'm not even talking about them seeing about the dogs and the inhumane treatment. What I wanna address, what they never want to address. Whenever you hear them quote Article seven in the Constitution, they always say they born him. They would say they apply their age of eighteen, but they never bring up that renounce. Even that white man. Hey, now, let me help you, first of all, Haitians are not statless. Article eleven of the Haitian Constitution say if a Haitian child is born anywhere around the world to Haitian parents, they are a Haitian national at the time of birth. Haitian nationality and the word citizenship, according to the Haitian Constitution, is synonymous. Okay, it's interchangeable. So don't let them fool you with that. They're always talking about being born in the Bahamas. Mister Ben also shared this the other day. I'm gonna share it also, right, because me and him have the same document. See this document here? This is a document that they give to Haitian children at the embassy, claiming that they renounce their citizenship. Haitian law. Under November sixth, nineteen eighty four presidential decree, which was carried over to the nineteen eighty seven Constitution, which was ratified on the tenth of March nineteen eighty seven. A ventriloquy referendum by the people on the nineteenth said that this was adopted. Loss of Haitianship, Haitian citizenship is confirmed, the word is established by a presidential decree under the setting of that decree in the La Monita. This, my friend here, what they be giving the children over here, is an application form. This is not a presidential decree. I am here to declare tonight that no Haitian child born in this Bahamas that produces this document has renounced their citizenship. Now, they can get Parliament under the. Right? What is on this document is that the opponent. A opponent signs or swears to an affidavit or deposition. The name that appears on this document would be the name of the individual that claims that he is renouncing, he is a opponent. Because he is the opponent, that makes this a sworn affidavit or an affidavit in support. This is not a presidential decree. Secondly. The name of the bottom, at the bottom from the consul, he is the notary public. He is there to authenticate this document that the opponent signed. A presidential decree has the president's signature on it.
Right.
You know that? This has the consul's signature. Right? This is what a presidential decree looks like. Hey, this has to do with naturalization though. Where it carries the same amidst. It says, Jean Claude Devale, I go away back. Monday, August twenty six, nineteen seventy four, the twenty ninth year, number sixty eight. Decree, Jean Claude Devale, President for Life of the Republic. Considering Article ninety three of the Constitution, it mentioned their constitutional law. The law of August twenty second, nineteen oh seven on nationality, the decree law of July third, nineteen forty one. The decree law of February twenty seven, nineteen seventy. Mister Nebek S. Tegi of Lebanese nationality has submitted a request to the Department of Justice expressing the desire to acquire Haitian nationality through nationalization. And has provided the required legal documentation. He has fulfilled the legal conditions and has received a favorable moral character report from the Department of Interior. Based on the report of the Secretary of State and Justice decrees Article one. Now, the savvy is granted Haitian nationality. Jean Claude Devale, President and Secretary Jeanie, this is a presidential decree. Okay, that nonsense they giving them down to the embassy, where they renounce, they renounce. We can challenge that in court, okay?
Come on, Blackmail.
Let me read something to you from Katura Ferguson, the former director of the Immigration Department. She sent out an email after she realized that the document that they purported to be a presidential decree was not authentic. And I read. Good afternoon, P S Strom and Minister Perry. It has been brought to my attention that the department has been swearing in individuals without renouncing, contrary to the requirements of the Bahamas Nationality Act, chapter one ninety, please see attached. Kindly advise under what legal grounds are covered by not following the law? I obey your urgent response. Before they respond to Katura Ferguson, they fired him. They gangsters, can you all hear me say that? I got guts on that, that's why when I say things, I like my boy here, I got the guts, I don't use the word language. You want me, you come for me, let the guts come out in a corner, you know? I'm gonna sip a little water, I just. Oh, they fixed that wrong, he banned Mister Minister Immigration. The Prime Minister parole the host of assembly, non disorder, he parole it. Reshuffle his cabinet, put Keith Perry housing, before they addressed that problem. They fired that woman because she told them they broke in the law, because these Haitians wasn't renouncing. Tell newbie charges them answer that. That's a fake document, okay? Now, on the roster. Let's deal with the bit, I just wanted to get that out there. Because that nonsense I heard just now, I had to pull up our Constitution on my phone. Okay, to explain to the Bahamian people, that nonsense of statlessness, they could go right to the Haitian Embassy and pick up their passport. An international law, a statless person. Right, is a person who is not accepted or recognized under the law of any state by that country's law. Well, the Haitian Constitution, Article eleven, recognize them as Haitians at the time of birth. Statlessness, do not allow to Haitians, okay? Now. Finish with the document, Maria? There we go. I'm gonna bring a precursor to what I'm gonna mention in this bit. Okay? There's a correlation, see, they call Mister Ben a liar. Ryan Ben, them strangers, that's called like. But I ain't calling, there's liars. They try and make this man look like he was done. I am here tonight not to defend him, but to defend truth. So if he was talking nonsense, try with the venue, and I saw Blackmail go down. I wanna show you the correlation with this asylum bill, you know smuggling and migrants, this asylum. Alright, with this asylum bill and the nineteen fifty one Refugee Convention. Right? They had a protocol in sixty seven. Amid that protocol in sixty seven, they made certain things retroactive. I used the word retroactive on Steve McKinney's show the other night, and I didn't realize what I was saying till I found something today. The problem with this bill, or the answers in the bill, what you looking for, eh, actually in the bill, some there. But most of the trouble is in the treaty, Fred Mitchell have not signed. Well, the bill, once it's passed, it kicks in the treaty, the stuff you doing over. Okay? Now.
It's on our website, run in the front page.
Let me read something to you, the U N nineteen fifty one Refugee Convention supplemented by the nineteen sixty seven Protocol. Is the cornerstone of refugee law, it's a precursor, I can get into the bill right now. Defining, but I just wanna get onto you, um, the treaties, this have to do with the treaties, then we'll deal with the bill. Refugee is very persecution for race, religion, nationality, etc. And establishing fundamental principles, primary, primarily, this mean Lincoln word, non refoulement. I trip up a couple times when I was trying to say that, and I think I get it, that, that's one word I, I need to remember.
Non refoulement.
Oh, non refoulement.
Password.
Non refoulement. That means no force returned to danger, a minimum rights, housing, work, and education. Right? Key aspects of the convention, found in Article one of the convention, the definition of a refugee. Okay, and then the word non refoulement. See, I can say refoulement, he can say that, I'm in a concept. So, that right there, what I read, you can find that in section two, entry of this asylum bill. So, I sent you straight there, before I get into the bit. So, what's in the bit? It's part of the treaties already, they just now putting in the bill, and I can show you all there to go for that particular section, section two and section three. Now, let me read something else. Rights and standards. Um, U N H C R role under Refugee Agency, U N H C R, and common principle, listen to the rights and standards. Online basic rights, including access to housing, boy education, and public relief, ensuring dignity and independence. The nineteen sixty seven protocol remove time. Nineteen sixty seven protocol remove time, pre nineteen fifty one. Retroactive. So, when this bill pass, this can check in with the bill, and everything will go retroactive, so that mean the bill is signed from the day, every Haitian from independent? Oh, you getting it? Retroactive, so all the newbie down from above, they could now try applying the asylum, but it's not too fast. Pre nineteen fifty one, sorry, that's the part of the treaty, okay? U N H C R role, U N H C R agency acts as the guardian promoting the convention and helping countries incorporate it into national law. The U N is the guardian, right? The fellow in charge, I need beaten and forcing countries. Putting in there, not international, national law. See, if this don't go in our national law, it ain't have no teeth, it's not binding. This is why they pushing this now to go in our national law, to give the international law freedoms. Why? Because we are independent country. Here's the problem they are facing. The Constitution is the supreme law of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. Subjected to the vision of this Constitution. If any other law is inconsistent with this Constitution, the Constitution shall prevail. And the other law, to the extent of its inconsistency is void. The treaties, what the governments and administration, from administration sign, are null and void because it's not consistent with the Constitution, now why is that? We have a bicameral administration, formal government, two chambers, Parliament, the House and the Senate. Article fifty two of the Constitution says only Parliament could make laws. Okay, that's why Parliament gotta pass this, them fellas signing document, Fred Mitchell, I hear when they can sign it, that, that means nothing. All the minister, foreign affairs who done sign this mess, that do mean nothing, that's why every time you pull up the file on the U N, they gonna know when you all can implement this law. Seems there, it's a constitutional monarchy, I sorry this one. Ain't gotta go to a referendum because they doing this to the Immigration Act, they could use statute law. It's not entrenched, okay? Now, common principles. Non-discrimination, refugees must be treated without discrimination based on race, religion, origin. Non-penalization, refugees should not be penalized for illegal entry incoming directly from a threat. All this is a part of the treaties, but you have to go dig this up, right? State obligation, this us now, protocol state, details the duties of signatory countries to protect refugees and provide assistance. Now, I'm gonna tell you where you can find that. Rights and standards of the nineteen fifty one Convention Protocol can be found in section thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty one of this asylum bill. Yeah? Okay? I guess I'm reading you the treaty.
What asylum bill, I told you it's a smuggling bill.
There's asylum bill, Maria, behave yourself. They say it's a smuggling bill, don't they, Ken? Smuggling of migrants, spend two thousand, twenty five. Be no better. No better, okay? And so. Treaties that I already read to you, it is now in this asylum bill. So, Ryan Ben, then I'm talking for him, man, I just see no asylum bill, man. Okay, so why you went, I, for check what I told you, fuck, check me, that's all. I ain't got time to argue no more, I got the Constitution. Okay, I ain't got time to argue with you, man. There's a bunch of constitutional elements in Parliament, I tell you. They look in your arms and go. They look in your arms and go for us. Right? Boy laying on their back, laying on their belly. And when they done signed document, and then through their nastiness, they go sign stuff. Now I ain't calling no name, and I say that. Calling names earlier. Y'all hear me calling you? Gotta put it on record. In nineteen sixty-seven, the UNHCR made a protocol, made the protocol retroactive. That's what I just told you. This is a genocide, and even if it allowed, it would bring on the Bahamian people. This bill would supersede the nineteen sixty-seven Immigration Act under nineteen twenty-seven Penal Code. You know where you can find that? Section thirty-five, this bill. That's why I said to Maria that she was talking. Section thirty-five. It suspends the Immigration Act with migration. I can get to that. Show you. Ryan Fender, I mean, know what the hell when they say. This make me so mad. I see y'all is wondering why it's run on, right? Man, you know stuff. I do see these fellas doing stuff and taking it as a donkey. In his body, you see, I grew up in the ghetto. I grew up in the war. Sinbana was, that's I grew up. I grew up in Kewabod, Skivo, eh, across the road, yellow well. I grew up around gangsters. I know gangsterism. I followed them from afar. But these fellas can't fool me. They going to college, but that's all they got. I know the streets. I know where I get to swing. Yeah, that's still on there. Twenty-five hundred. The UNHCR, so I told you, Section thirty-five. The UNHCR rule, what I just read, you can find that in Section thirty. Nothing but the guardian. That is in Section thirty of this bill. All this in the treaty what I read. They putting in the bill asylum still. Don't mind him. Core principles that I read, you can find in Section Two, subsection one eight, Section eleven and Section seventeen of this bill. This is asylum. Treaties I just read in this bill. You just gotta know and type it. We can do that tonight. Non-discrimination, rights and protection. Access to asylum. This is the UNHCR now treaty. Um, in- implicitly, states must provide protection for hosts meeting the definition. For those, sorry, meeting the definition. Say states have to provide asylum for those meeting the definition. Basic standard rights to housing. It's the thing they mentioned this other day over there. Gotta give them free housing and stuff. They ain't got it in the bill, but in the treaty. But then the bill pass, the free housing, he talk about the kid. Public relief and social security, NID. NID.
So I'm pause it right now. In fact, the same Ryan Fender, uh, he had previously said that the problem with the asylum bill that the FNM was bringing, uh, as he said in twenty twenty-two, is that we're gonna have the Bahamas is gonna have to provide housing, shelter, medical, education, all this stuff, these people. Alright, Google it quick. I'm gonna put it on the screen to y'all. Google it. Ryan himself said it. And now they aim after it.
UNHCR rule, that's the UN. Guardian, UNHCR protects the convention and protocol, helping translate them international laws. See that again? That's their role. Right? Guidance. Provides handbooks and guidelines for implementation of the convention. So, today's administration get all kind of handbook and thing. We're trying to lead them now, but they mix up. Right? Access to asylum can be found in Section thirty of this asylum bill. Access to it. Freedom of religion and movement. Section three of this bill. UNHCR rule. All thirty-seven sections of the asylum bill has their rule. They own this bill. Okay, it's what they putting on us. The Bahamas was made a signatory in nineteen ninety-three. Right? And I think that was on Ingram. Yeah, because Ingram came in in ninety-two. Alright, and but they never put nothing into law. Right? It was never codified into law. That's why they keep nagging us. Now, let me read something, then I'm gonna go into the bill. This is one of the agreements the Bahamas made. The Bahamas made agreement with the convention on its nineteen sixty-seven protocol. Um, agrees to international standards for refugee protection. Working with UN HCR. UNHCR governing body sharing data and processing asylum claims via status determination RSD. While it lacks comprehensive domestic asylum legislation. This is what the UN saying now, we lack that. It has agreements for the expedited removal of irregular migrants, especially from Cuba and Haiti. We done sign to expedite Cubans and Haitians from Haiti in the treaty. Expedite. So now if you done sign to expedite them, you think you planning on deporting? They done sign it. Why you think the prime minister pulling up their phone with four flight of week? And all them rare private airlines coming in? Why you think? They done sign to expedite. They ain't planning on sending these people back? Nah. Interpretation in the bill. Conveyance means a method of transporting goods and people by land, water, and air. As I continue to read the bill, you already realize that most of this is focusing on vessels on sea. But if conveyance is land, water, or air. The prime minister bringing them in. Once they time up, this bill pass, they can clean the asylum because they from a troublesome state. Eighty been round two hundred and twenty-one years. Too long. Okay? So, that's the airline and sea. Right? Then the non-refulaman. Non-refulaman. That's all I got.
Refulaman.
Refulaman.
Non-refulaman.
Section eight. Subsection eight. The migrant's life of freedom would be threatened on account of race, religion, nationality, membership, or a particular social group or political opinion in accordance with the nineteen fifty-seven Convention relating to the status of refugee. Alright, so the migrant life is threatened, he isn't fair. I come over here, I enter detention center as a Haitian. Haitian consulate come there, I say, man, I scared to go back Haiti because I used to party, yank barbecue, might try, kill me. That's grounds to be the state. They could come up with a story like that. That's thirteen million people to tell that same story because that's a war zone. That's Haiti. The world understands that all of them to qualify for asylum. That's twenty-five protocol. Against smuggling land, sea, and air. So United Nations Convention against transorganized crime. So, the airline and sea, that in the treaty. Or if you read this, you only hearing but the sea. So let me explain that. You see how Mr. Bean reported the other day that they found some men in Ruby George's car? With fake discs and fake license plate. If they arrest four of them, and they time up, they get them to detention center. They could apply for asylum because the conveyance, what I just read, say you airline and sea, they online in a car. They adjustable. It's air, land, and sea. So when you, when the police pull them over now, and they arrest them, and they time up, you know more deportation, they gotta get them to detention, and they gotta call the consulate without delay. So before you deport me, I gotta talk to the Haitian consulate. Even then, right when pick form up, authorize it, saying you applying for asylum. Even then, send that to the minister. The minister got to send that, ensure that that don't reach the UNHCR. That's what they trying to do now.
And we have to provide them with legal aid.
Smuggling of migrants or smuggling of a migrant means to a team directly the indirectly or financial or other material benefit for protecting the illegal entry or illegal landing of a person. When you overstaying, you got them fake documents. Silent. Smuggling. Here's the difference between smuggling and trafficking. Smuggling, you got my consent and I pay you. That makes you an accomplice. Trafficking is you kidnapping me like a transatlantic slave trade. Through the middle passage. Pay you to save a sign. They traffic. If I pay you with my consent, you ain't qualified for no asylum. You come over here or educational away. Free movement. You was enforced. And in fact, if they got a problem, the problem in Haiti, we in corner bricks. You could go to Cayman Ocean or Puerto Rico. Just to give you, they running on us. Right? But we can expose them. Right? The emperor now has no clothes on. Section three. Application of the act. The act should be interpreted and applied in a way that A is not discriminatory and abhors the protection and fundamental rights and freedoms of the individuals under the constitution of the Bahamas. See how they slip in the constitution? B is consistent with the principle of non-refulaman. So, under the constitution, everyone who is in province of the Bahamas has rights, not only Bahamians. Understand that. Right? They are trying to implement chapter three of the constitution, which deals with fundamental rights, Article fifteen to thirty-one. And they trying to entrench these people. Right? Not so much in the constitution, but entrench them to stay there because they say it's consistent with the principle of non-refulaman. So yeah, they connect. When they come in here, and you don't charge them, like the deputy said. Right? They ain't committing no crime. I ain't commit no crime. So I'm not a criminal. But I just came from a state. There, I am in fear for my life. My individual rights and my freedom, according if this implemented, the non-refulaman now kicks in. Because I'm no longer criminal. I'm a regular citizen. And if the bill pass, you can't send the Haitians back home. Forget deportation. That's why they ain't charging the migrant. They ain't charging the migrant. So the migrant will have a criminal history. You could deport anyone with a criminal history. If the migrant does not have a criminal history in this bill pass, it is consistent with chapter three of the constitution with their fundamental rights. They have all to this bill, non-refulaman. Prohibited from standing there back home. You can't deport Haitians no more. If this bill pass, famous. Don't let this asylum bill pass. You got that like Fred Smith now? It right here. You won't. Fred Smith never won a citizenship case. Never. Check the record. He wastes chapter three, individual rights. That's suspicious ground. Objection, arrest and detention, Article nineteen. When they come to citizenship, he can't do nothing after seven. The Jean Rooney kicks already food out. From there, you go quiet on citizenship. Because the pretty consulate didn't Jean Rooney citizenship. Right? Because they didn't apply a time. They didn't even get to renouncing at that level. They didn't need to mention that. Jean Rooney never went down. The pretty consulate will wait for me. Well, the argument in the court. The head in case. Bahamas. You could go ahead. You could go ahead.
I never found any president of Jean Rooney being born in the Bahamas. His poison count would be image. Was at the age of twelve. His mother's poison. Twice. He came in first in the baby. The sister tried to came back the second time in twenty thirty and damage. No record of her ever having any children in the Bahamas.
Thanks for the information. Now make a three hundred children. Beyond C B. What I'm trying to make immediately in the courts, it is presumed based on the evidence that he was born. So what I'm trying to say that they had ruled based on the assumption that he was born in the Bahamas. Now, your point is correct. I glad I heard that. There we go. But the courts. Yes. The courts assumed that he was born in the Bahamas, even the pretty consulate. Because when they dealt this matter, they went straight to our conservator. All the Constitution. To litigate that matter. Alright? Casey Poole and Caleb Reinsen represented the respondent. Fred Smith, and First General from Harvey Army. The chief was, um, represented the appellate, Jean Rooney. But he never came out there with citizenship. And so. They want those people to be entrenched. So that during the border. Article twenty-four, freedom of association. Article three. Would kick in. Freedom of association for them would kick in. Article twenty-four and articles twenty-five, freedom of movement would kick in. So, you wouldn't be able to stop them, because they are criminals. And then the statute law would have already adopted non-reformant. Which is not inconsistent with the Constitution. Because article fifty-two said, parliament may make laws. There's nothing in the Constitution that does not stop parliament from making that particular law, as I know. I need to be there, bro, I wish I wrong. There's one time I wish I. Okay? Where the parliament can make the law. That's why we are dealing with the failures in parliament. Now. C. Accounts for the special needs of smuggled migrants, particularly women and children, and other migrants with special needs. This act shall apply to all forms of smuggling of migrants, whether the smuggling of migrants relate to organized crime or group. So, large or small. That's what this deal will be. Section five, garbage, I wouldn't even address that. All I hear is fluff, that making you believe they trying to prosecute someone. That's fluff. Fraudulent travel and identity documents, it explains what that is, I don't have to deal with that. Enabling illegal state of smuggled migrants, I don't have to deal with that. Let me show you what I have to deal with. Fast forward it. Section eleven of this asylum deal. Immunity from the prosecution of smuggled migrants, this is what the deputy spoke to. Without prejudice, the applicability of any other law established in criminal offense. A smuggled migrant should not be liable to criminal prosecution under this act in respect of A, illegal entry into the country, or receiving country, or transit country. B, remaining illegally in the receiving country, or transit country. C, possessing a fraudulent travel and identity document. Jesus, man, people on the court papers, and they get charged. So, the Airs administration, the court's all fast forward. Once you get them, they ain't charged, so you put them in the court, or the Airs government, or immigration department. You have a free charge to the private trader, where the private trader is not being charged. Where such act is a direct consequence of the smuggling of the migrant. Alleged to have been committed, or found to have been committed by court. And the migrant is a victim of the criminal code prohibited under that law. So, you're now turning a criminal into victim. Turning a criminal into victim. Okay. All your own beliefs, all those people in talks in prison. They victims. Yeah, they did a crime, but they did it for reason. So, they are victims of this crime. Why can't you give an honest opinion about them? So, what happened to all the babies who made those dead wrong? What happened to us?
Why don't you give me a water, I'll give you another analogy to make you understand it. That's like saying you're not gonna knock up drug dealers, not people who are actually get caught with drugs. So, if you get caught with drugs, you're straight, because we only want the drug dealers. Alright? That's what this is kind of going through. So, if you got no bag of marijuana in your house. They can say, okay, no, no, we don't want you, we want a drug dealer, so you can't get that. That makes no sense. I don't think you get this. You know what asylum means? Asylum means that anyone from Haiti, oh, well, when they come here, they claim asylum. And now. Their wife.
Their wife.
Their children.
Children.
Alright? Alright? Only one that come on the boat.
That come on the boat.
And then once they come here.
And then once they come here.
They can send for the rest.
That's what they say. That's what they saying to you.
That's the rules.
That's the rules.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Treaty. The treaties. They putting it, they putting it. But once you pass, once you pass, treaty kick in, treaty kick in. Hey, payments. Hey, payments. Section twelve. Section twelve. Duties of master captain or agents of a conveyance. They master captain or agent of a conveyance, they use that way conveyance, you gotta look at things up. Conveyance. But you take part eighteen, language, this you think is just a book thing. Conveyance. Conveyance. Who fought to verify. Who fought to verify. And every passenger on the conveyance possesses the relevant identity. See, they say. You understand, but then you be thinking in the plane, in the car. And you think on the boat. On the boat. Just in and on. Some people just thinking. Identity, travel documents required to enter the Bahamas. Commits an offense, and liable to some restriction in the fine of not exceeding one hundred thousand dollars. A master captain or agent of a conveyance who fails to notify the authorities that a person has attempted to travel, or has traveled on a conveyance without identity and travel documents required into the Bahamas. Commits an offense, and in addition, to any other penalty provided. In any other. Is liable, a summary of conviction to a fine, not exceeding one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. He has the caveat. He has the caveat. A master. Of a conveyance is not liable, is not liable to a fine. But in this section F. He believe, he believes. On reasonable. On reasonable grounds. Anecdotal evidence, which in court will become prima facie evidence. Because it will be true, I can prove it otherwise. Now, when I give you my testimony, my truth. How? The government can bring a prosecutor. The challenge that they was not in the vehicle. At the time. It's a new world. The president can't even pay no money. The migrants are coming free, and the boat captain, and the fellow side who lose the car, and the pilot, all of them is smart. I isolate for the, I own his own lies. I don't know. The lies, the power of legal, let me put it like that. You know who's my teacher? Jesus Christ and improved supply. Two and three in the morning, then everyone sleeping. He be talking to me. They can't smart me. I tell you that. The vice of parliament, they call the Ryan Bennett, and sit down. Practicing dumbness. Now. If he believe on reasonable grounds that identity and travel documents presented by the passenger, where the identity and travel documents required for lawful entry to Bahamas, is what he believe, what fool believes. So. When you arrest the defendant in the court, he loyal, like Fred Smith. Fred Smith roll up two dollar bills, one fake, one good. Fred Smith is a good country. He going to the fake one. Yeah, that's what he believe. Now, how the government can challenge that? He know I T. He know I T. To say, he know what a passport looks like. He's a boat captain, or car driver, or a pilot. He can't authenticate a document, is what he believes. You can never charge that, they make you pay money on that. If I was the defense lawyer, I'd walk through the court with me on it. I'd hand you some of the court with asylum.
And to them.
Practicing dumbness. Taking our tax payers money. B, the passenger presented the required identification and travel documents for lawful travel, uh, entry into the Bahamas. When boarding the conveyance to the Bahamas, so he looking at the documents, he say, are they diligent? C, the entry into the Bahamas resulted from a rescue at sea, or circumstances beyond the control of the master captain or agent. See, they trying to keep this language, and make you think it's a boat. So, listen, if I's a fellow smuggling people, and I see the defense force, or US post can't come in, I can shoot the engine. I can deserve on the boat. And I can get off here, it's fine. The entry into the Bahamas resulted from a rescue at sea. I needed to be rescued. The circumstances beyond my control. I have no more control in the boat than the engine blow. I drop it. Captain of agents. Luke Paul, he don't want to pay no money. He's fellow is joking. They sit down and advise this on the medium people. Alright? D. The passenger transported, remember now, a master captain or agent of a conveyance is not liable to a fine, that's what we dealing with. So, they give them four bases that will pay that money. It's the last one. The passenger transported is provided protection against non-reformant. Non-reformant. Or is provided access to asylum. So, if you get one passenger, now bow down, you're trying to apply asylum or re non-reformant. You can't charge the driver or the agent. Cause you exempt. You don't get it? Thank you, Mr. Elliot. Unbelievable. I wanna get charged. I can shoot my engine. Break the scandal, like myself. We blind around the bank, they make a plan. And back to. And back to making. The migrant. Migrant smuggler of the. Smuggler of the. My children need, my children need food. I just lost my girl, I got a picture. Everyone on, everyone on. Children crying. Children crying. Dog barking. Dog barking. I go and shoot while you. I go and shoot. I still, I still, I still. Rice. Corn people, fully. I got corn. I yell loca, and dog would get dog at you. I yell loca. I yell loca. It's a victim, man. It's a victim, man. Cause I did it, because I did it. So, why you don't. Drop the license, drop the license. You know must be. So, who knows? Of circumstance? Another case, another case. A mortgage behind, a mortgage behind. I'm calling in non, I'm calling in non-accrual. The Biden sentence, the B, the B, they get ready to repossess my house. I say, Lincoln, I need that. Say, what you need to do? I say, I know this bill now, he. I just say. I say, what we can do? Let's go raw. Let's go raw. We need to rob Scotia. Royal can identify. I say, Lincoln, what I want you. Lincoln, what I want. And when you drive the car. I can go hold the camera. Him? Him? Cause he outside the car. Cause he outside. I taking, I taking the risk. But under this bill? But under this bill? Lincoln to get guy. Lincoln to get guy. Cause he drive the car. I can walk through. Under this bill. Under this bill. The pilot, the captain, the agent, the fellow in the car. He's in the car. I'm the pilot, I'm the driver, I'm in the car. He getting charged. The fools that they take me out. So, no fine. Thirty, pass forward. Facilitating entry, or stay for justice protest. The minister may grant a temporary resident permit. I mean, no, they're temporary. Some people are temporarily permitted from seventy-three. We know that's what you balance. Right? Temporary isn't for me. Right? That's the minister. Let's go to section twenty-one. Access the consular pistol from smuggled agents and migrants. Twenty-one-one. It's up thirty-seven, we got the three or four one unfinished. Where a smuggled migrant is arrested or detained. The arresting or detaining authority shall, without delay, inform the smuggled migrant of his rights to communicate with the consul officer. Now, see Haitian ambassador, they get smelling. Without delay, you gotta make sure he contact him, so he can make up them asylum paper, notarize it, and hurry send that to the UNHCR. Just make us have ready the key, whatever. It's a game. Street talk, it's a game. They giving us. Right? This in the law. Right? And I'm clarifying it to show you how they thought about it on every step, all the way. So, you will call the consul. He go do that, right? Inform the smuggled migrant, the consul officer. And all reasonable steps shall be taken by the arresting or detaining authority to facilitate communication between the smuggled migrant and the consul. You gotta do whatever you could to make sure he reached the Haitian embassy, before he even talk with the court. So, they put that in the law, so you can't deport until. So I'm saying? Process. Process. Right? Where the smuggled migrant expresses interest in communicating with the consul officer. Arresting and detaining, um, authority should notify the relevant consul officer that a national of the state is arrested and detained, so you gotta hotel Haitian embassy. Provide it to the consul officer. The location where the smuggled immigrant is being held, and facilitate communication between the relevant consul officer and the smuggled migrant. I tell you, he can go rusty in that fake paper, in this case. And then he can make up the asylum clean. See, let's stop. No writing. No writing. So, it becomes official, and it's passed on to the UNHCR. Now. Now. Twenty-eight. Operational framework for measures at sea. See, they mentioned measures at sea. They say number of land or air. They trying to keep you believing. You will only deal with this, in the sea. With smart noise, you see what I see. Conveyance, airline, or sea. You gotta love noise, you know, move on, right, Ron, man. You know what they do? They're totally legally anonymous there. Lost their documents. And then they say, let me came in on one boat. Clean asylum. You ain't got no proof that they come through that port. They ain't got no passport, no nothing. But you never catch the boat. But because they clean asylum from the boat, how you can prove they come on the boat? One, a merchant sailor at sea, under this clause, shall be carried or owned by ships wherever operated by the Bahamas Customs Defense Force, Police Force, or Coast Guard of a protocol state, who signed the treaty. That clearly, uh, and identified. I wanna go to eat. Ensure that the merchant sailor of complying with human rights. With the human rights of migrants and humanitarian obligations toward migrants. Including the rights of migrants to leave a country, the right to seek asylum. Same to them. Not one place, three or four places. To seek international protection, and the right to pursue the protection of non-reformant. That could now be something right. If Congress send the Haitian. That's what Roy Davis, Ryan Bennett. And now parliament go pass, want to hear new people. You gotta get rid of these fellows, man. They got his juice. You got to get rid of them. This what they doing to us? Oh, but there's more. Ensure not to endanger the security of the vessel and cargo, so they can't even damage the Haitian boat. G, ensure that. Ensure that the commercial or legal interest of the flying state, or any other interested state, are not prejudiced and or any other interested state are not prejudiced and H, ensure within available means that the measure taken regarding the vessel is in environment, he sound. They can't damage the boat, man. This guy is supposed to be Haitian coming on free. Haitian, I don't know if I'm coming on free. And to come to the point, Ben Coast Guard or Immigration Customs, the best hospital? He know this is the captain. Now everyone start saying, no, not the English. You wanna know the captain? And all of the flag for sight, that's the game. You wanna know the captain? You know, I got meant to be the captain. So he can be no fine. So they ain't got to go to court. They don't care when the ring and you go, they own three now. I'd look. Three more in the clothes. Refer to migrants with specific protection needs. That's section twenty. In performing functions under its power, the minister shall ensure, ensure that the smuggled migrant seeking asylum or international protection under the convention relating to status of refugee or international law are quickly referred to the appropriate authority. You know what appropriate authority is to God? You know what that is? That's the nice law, God, yeah. The UNHCR. They got a they got a show. That's what that means, right? It's like must. It's like must. That's an imperative. Okay? Okay? Two. Minister shall ensure that the Office of United Nations High Commission for Refugees and Living International Access, the smuggled migrants who are seeking asylum. But they say they're seeking asylum. That's what they say. That's what they say. We know better. We know better. Protection of smuggled migrants. Protection of smuggled migrants. That's the return process. In the return process. Minister shall ensure the minister shall ensure the plan or actual bench of the smuggled migrants. Bench of the smuggled migrants is consistent with international laws, refugee laws. Humanitarian laws. Humanitarian laws as well as the rights of them under the Constitution. So see where they die, chapter three of the Constitution, back in, the fundamental rights. They put that in here. They put that in here to try and trench the people. Okay? Thirty-four. Okay? Thirty-four. Protection of existing legal arrangements for smuggling migrants. Nothing in this nothing or remedy appointed or available to a person who is the victim of an offense related to the smuggling of migrants. That's the people who come on the boat, the Haitian woman and their children. A. Another law obligation under a bilateral or multilateral treaty or under a bilateral or multilateral operational agreement. There even the treaties when they assign all over the world, once this pass, all the treaties come into force. They mention treaties now. On a bilateral and multilateral agreements.
I don't want a person to confuse victims uh, uh, who are smuggled with trafficked victims. Those are two different scenarios. That's two different crimes and situations. This has nothing to do with trafficking of persons. In fact, other countries that are putting placement on Pakistan, even the European countries, they reference trafficking as they were talking there. They said with trafficking victims was and differentiated there from smuggled persons. Okay? So don't make them cause you to think that they can somehow be talking about victims who are trafficked. Like a woman might be kidnapped for theft, trafficking, etc. Has nothing to do with this. Alright? This is only about smuggled persons.
Last section, section thirty-five. Thirty-five, I'm done. Prevailing law. You got right, they can talk on foolishness.
Basically, this is some of your information, they getting the feedback.
Got it? Okay.
You back up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Did they miss? They want me to repeat something or they go? Just keep on, okay? Section thirty-five, prevailing law. Thirty-five-one. Listen to this. The provisions of this act shall be, in addition to, are not interrogation of the provisions of the other written law relating to smuggling of migrants. Okay, they sorry. Ain't gonna be a derogation to the nineteen sixty-seven Immigration Act. Remember now, we had this argument for independence. We became independent July ten, nineteen seventy-three. These fellows getting rid of a British colony law. Them people from the Bahamas Islands to sue these people. To sue these people, that's what they're doing. Listen to two. In the event of a conflict or inconsistency between the provisions of this act and those of other written laws, the penal code of January nineteen twenty-seven, the nineteen sixty-seven Immigration Act, if let me repeat that. In the event of a conflict or inconsistency between the provisions of this act and those of other written laws, the provisions of this act shall prevail.
You missing out the Constitution.
Yeah, but they can't supersede that, but that's the supreme law.
Thank you very much.
They can't even on that. I can finish this right now. Act shall prevail under conflicting or inconsistent provision of the other written laws, the penal code for fraud and Immigration Act, which deals with this matter, shall, to the extent of the conflict or inconsistency, be deemed to be suspended. Ain't no more immigration.
Thank you very much.
Sixty-seven law.
Thank you very much.
Then you suspend the law, man? Break your Bahamas!
Even the penal code?
Even the penal code, what's your charge if people be fraud?
Thank you very much.
Let me show you all that same language. That running their heart right now.
You are right.
I normally quote it, right? I normally quote it, but um let me read it. Let me read it for you. Let me read it for you. I'm now pulling up the Constitution of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. I know it for beat'em, but let me, let me, let me chapter one, article two. Alright?
Blackway, you on the right page.
Article two of the Constitution. The Constitution is the supreme law of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
Right here.
And subject to the provision of this Constitution, if any other law is inconsistent with this Constitution, the Constitution shall prevail and the other law, to the extent of its inconsistency is void. They use the same language with this bill. So they saying if any law inconsistent with this asylum bill as it relates to the Immigration Act of sixty-seven or the penal code, it is suspended. There is no immigration law for this migration under this bill. Tell Ryan Pinder, I'm gonna sip his, you know what, down. Okay? They gonna run that game on us. Y'all can suspend the penal code for fraud. Y'all can suspend the nineteen sixty-seven Immigration Act for these Haitians? Y'all ain't serious, bro. Y'all ain't serious. That don't make you all mad? These people suspending our laws. So they use the same language as the Constitution.
You're lying.
They can do that without a referendum because the law that they are altering is an immigration law, that's ordinary statute. They can't put that in the Constitution. You need a referendum for citizenship. They can't put that in the Constitution. This is an immigration law which the Bahamas Island Parliament was privy to under self-governance. Remember now, the British was in charge of external governance, which includes citizenship, nationality, foreign affairs and defense. But we are, we are self-governance from nineteen sixty-four. The sixty-seven Immigration Act, the government was able to operate with that. Citizenship has to do with entitlement and rights. Okay? Immigration has to do with movement of people. So the Bahamas Island Parliament was able to pass an immigration law and they could alter it. That's why they didn't say, why they don't just alter it in the immigration law? But they suspending the immigration law and letting this state precedent to make sure them Haitian straight. Bahamas? I rest my case.
Y'all, give him a round of applause. So I'm now going to open the floor to you if you have questions. Um, tens of thousands of people are watching this all over the world right now um, on all of our social media platforms. Most people are actually on YouTube right now. Um, but um, uh, they're watching this from all over the world. They go on YouTube, that's when they want to watch it on TV and see it good. They don't want to see it on their little phone. Um, and so ask your questions or make your comment. How do you feel? Let the government hear from you. You see, they tease bills because they want to see your response. If you don't respond, then they go forward. If you do, then they pretend they was never really gonna do that. They don't really know how that got leaked, that's a bunch of foolishness, and then they come back later. And so let your voice be heard. That's what we're here for. So that the government can hear that we serious about this. Let me tell you something. I am so serious about this. I'm willing to go to that House of Assembly on any day that they think they're gonna table this in our house and make sure that they know that we will not have that. Alright? This one will end our nation as we know it. Fifteen million Cubans next door. Fifteen million Haitians down south. Three plus million uh, Jamaicans around the corner. A billion Chinese who can come in container ships. We want the status quo to remain the way it is, which means you have to come the right way. Don't transform our laws for nobody. For nobody. Alright, so I'm gonna open the floor now and so you could just uh, stand up and, and speak.
Let me say this one thing before the questions. This asylum bill? This here? This is a nuclear bomb for the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. Okay? The bomb is getting set to go off. The only individuals that can make this bomb go off is the parliament. The parliament is the enriched uranium. Two thirty-five. Or if you're using platinum, it's Bu two thirty-nine. That's what this bill is. The members of parliament, they is the uranium, the enriched uranium to give this country away. Talk to your members of parliament. Okay? Thank you.
Alright, the floor is open.
Uh, I won't, I won't stand, but I, I would, I would just add to what, what y'all like to say. Uh, this is not only a, a silent bill, but this uh, uh, bill that is gonna with the PLF and the P or the PLP, we have been trying to do is bring in votes. I want to understand that because they famous for that. We're a disturbed foreigner to vote our elections. So these doubles are what they're trying to play and bring persons in now and, and watch the timing. And, 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 and how we see the P and the F and the B together, the F and the B, the same thing. We're trying to bring in votes. So this is, this is not only about asylum and smuggling, but it's about votes. They understand that people are waking up. The humans are tired of them. So now they're trying to bring persons in who are now um, belonging to them and loyal to them. Right? I won't be surprised if, if, if they block me with these persons' passports or citizenship in order to vote. And they vote their way. So we gotta wake up. This is a serious situation. This is more than just a smuggling bill or asylum bill. This is all about bringing in votes. Alright? To stay in power. You see how desperately we're inside the last by-election? The amount of money they spent because they couldn't afford to lose the seat. Think about it. Had the P had been lost not by election to any party, they still would have had the majority. But they still couldn't afford to lose the seat. So they spent billions by election. Taxpayers money. So we, we, we got, now this is all about election. This is what they do around this time here. They put the, yeah, of immigration in the people or they bring the people in to vote.
Alright. Alright, thank you so much. Uh, next person. Normally we'll open up for calls from the, from the public ad wide, but I don't think, uh, I don't think that, I don't think that the, the audio will be good enough for us there in here. So we're just gonna take from persons on the inside. Go ahead. Cause persons already calling.
Good evening all, my name is Stephen McQueen. I'm the candidate for an assability for the Coalition of Independence. Before I ask a question on behalf of another, I want to remind the Bahamian public of something that Fred Mitchell himself said. He asserted that the Bahamian population was on the decline. And that the only thing that was, my words, keeping the Bahamian population afloat was immigration. And so it is clear, and, and he said that uh, we are not our replacement numbers aren't happening fast enough. We're not having enough children. Not enough people are coming in to keep the nation going. And so I have said that the Bahamas government is on a replacement mission. They have admitted as much. And so we see that going on with, with the flights that, that come in and, and how that they're not concerned about dealing with the immigration issue. A question that was asked to me was, is there anything that can be done now to stop the, the government from moving forward with their, with, what they're trying to do? Or to stop any flights that may be continuing to come in? And so people are concerned about what can be done now because they are afraid that come twenty twenty, twenty-six for the general election, we may already be in, in trouble with false documents, fraudulent Bahamian citizenship. And people are going to be committed, loyal to the government that gave them their citizenship. They will have that leverage over them. And so they're concerned that if something isn't done now, come twenty twenty-six, it may be too late. So the question is, what, if anything, can be done now?
Uh, vote COI.
That's right.
That's what can be done now. Um, we protested, there's news articles all over YouTube where you can see that. We went to the office of the Prime Minister and we had other protests to force them. We had a ten points that we forced them to do. And one of them was to stop the flights uh, from uh, Haiti to the Bahamas. And another one of them was to stop the, the work permits. They obliged. The government did do that, but only for a short period of time. Alright, they came right back. They didn't even tell the Bahamas when they brought it back. But they brought it back in a couple of weeks. Alright? And so the pressure we have been putting on them, uh, forced their hands. But at the same time, they're the government. And they can do what they want. They control the police, they control the courts because they appoint the judges. They get what decision they want, basically. Um, and so uh, what we need to do is what Fred Smith is trying to do. Fred Smith is trying to put Pintard in there so he can get what he wants. We need to put a government in there that's gonna look out for the Bahamian people. And so that's what the, what the real plan is and what we need to do. That's all that can be done at this time. So anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening. We vote for governments to go there to make laws to benefit and better our lives, correct?
That's right.
Not to sabotage us. Cause that's what this basically is. You know, I gotta thank the COI, Lincoln Bay, uh, Mr. Lewis, who was given this document first, I believe. And um, Mr. Gardner, because he's done some extensive research that has revealed some serious truths. When you have countries with billions of people, they could send a hundred they could send a hundred thousand people here and claim amnesty on a plane. We only have two hundred thousand adult voters, correct? So within five years, you can see people come from other countries, and it could be Canada, because they're having some turmoil. And they could say it's tough there for them. And you could see these persons run for government. Do you know where I'm going with this? So the country could have a government and a prime minister that looks nothing like how Bahamians look today. And you had mentioned with the Chinese and the US government. And we're talking Communist China. We're not talking Bahamians of Chinese descent. Different people we're talking about. Do we want a Communist Chinese House of Assembly? Because if you kick the can down the road, it could not turn out well. And I'm trying to watch what I say, because they listen to every word. But if you understand and can read between the lines, this is the scariest thing that's ever happened in fifty-two years. This is the most egregious bill ever presented. And we only had the COI on Main Street last week Wednesday. But one other party ended up doing parties. You saw the small group of people that was the only people defending this country. And we can now see how bad they talked about the COI, but how devastating it was when you woke it down. It's credible. Anyway, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening Bahamas. Good evening, everybody. I actually saw a document a few years ago. I recall the name of somebody that I know who has actually gotten that document of asylum. And this person is not from Haiti, by the way. So it's happening. I've been getting a lot of visions lately of two angels with swords to the ground. And Nehemiah comes to my mind. We're in a Nehemiah state of affairs right now, where we gotta rebuild this wall, but we gotta have the sword right there. And the sword represents an offensive offensive artillery. That means we have to get out there and work Bahamas. Not only to vote. You gotta go in your constituencies. Well, first of all, register, please. For crying out loud, register. The St. Ohtani playing around to be lazy, to wait. Wait on what? You have to work with your candidates to get out there, knock on doors, call people, and you gotta work those polls. Because at the end of the day, that's the law. That's probably the most important part of the process. You gotta work the polls, and you gotta work your constituency. Stop talking about what you're gonna do and da-da-da-da-da-da. Get out there and do it. Because now you realize what these fine people are saying, our country will be gone. So what are you gonna do? Work in the road? What are you gonna do? You gotta get out there and work. I love you.
Alright Bahamas. A lot tonight from my homeboy, my good friend, Blackmail. From my good friend, Lincoln Bean. From this gem of a lady, a red accent. Now what you gonna do? This upcoming general election, are you gonna vote these bastards out of parliament right now? Are you gonna take them out? Or are you gonna continue to do the same stuff? Do you love your children? Do you love your grandchildren? I keep saying this, because that's my heart pride right now for my eight children and the grand that's coming out of those eight children. Are you willing to sell your grandchildren and your children to these scumbags? Look here, I'm ready for a war in this country, you know? I'm ready to fight for this country, you know? I'm ready to destroy for my grandchildren, my children. I'm sick and tired of these bastards that all raised for the past thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years on our necks. I'm tired of that. I woke up in this country about there's some five years from these bastards being in there. Twenty twenty-one. That's when my eyes opened up. The Lincoln, Blackmail, and another good friend that I've gone to talk with, K C X. And I think many more. And when I found out when I found out who was running my country for decades, and it wasn't Bahamians, but look here, that most put up. My blood pressure goes back to the flipping truck. Then I found out that there were a bunch of scumbag Haitians running my parliament and running my country and running it down to hell. I couldn't believe that. And I did my own research whenever I bring in them, I'm talking about these Haitians in parliament. I went in and I did my own research and found out that Minnis was a Haitian, Davis was a Haitian, we don't know, that's other scumbag. Mitchell is a Haitian. Ingram is, well, I respect, well, let me, I respect Ingram a little bit. Because of what he did. And he went and did his first five years. He did a lot of stuff. But I heard that his white bear from Long Island pushed the pen in this, he looked, you better use some of it for this country. And I think that's why Ingram, yeah, what he did. But I'm angry. As a Bahaman, born, blood Bahaman. Today, and these bastards, and I'm not afraid. Davis, I told you. Come after me. Yes, sir. Do send a police and the whole squad after. I want you to come to me. If you pray, come to me. And I will show you what I'll do to you. I wanna see all y'all scumbags under the jail. I wanna see y'all, I was saying, hang y'all. Because of the treason acts that y'all did to the Bahamian people in my country. I say now, I want you to go to jail with those hardcore criminals that want you all down in there. And I want you all to die under them fellas. That's how I picture y'all. That's what I wanna see. That's what I wanna see. I'm done with y'all guys. Because y'all did some treasonous acts to us. And the humans need to break up and get tired. Look here. These candidates here under the Coalition of Independence. I've been with them for, until they, from they started. Godly man! Christians! You want this country to run by godly men and godly women? Hell? You want God's judgment to come down on you after this five years if you continue to put these demons in parliament? And God's people right here to run the country? Look here. Get your eyes off of these. Take and peel these, and these F and M Cs, red and yellow and the black. Let's go for God's people. This is God's people now. We need it. We need a drastic change in this country this time. Because it ain't gonna be another time if y'all do the same mess. And y'all, if y'all do the same mess, y'all will suffer the consequences. Our children, they could be like in Jesus' day, when they spent punches, I think it was Punches' father said, "Look here, I see no fault in this bond." But the people, the religious people said, "Look here, do away with him." And if it so be, let the Christ be on our children and our children's children. And do you want this election? Let the Christ be on our children's and our children's children?
Hello, everybody. This is Bobby Brown, the candidate for Foxhill constituency. I just want to congratulate our newly candidates to the COI. And I just want to reiterate what was said about going into your constituency. The young man right over there, stand up, sir. Because some of y'all may not know how Foxhill is going. So I can give you a little sight on how Foxhill's going. You'll have to put it on him. But the Foxhill people are now coming to reality. Oh, yes. Because in one section I went into in Foxhill, the Haitians got scared. Because you have some of the Haitians who are building up these huge apartments. And when I knocked on the door, when I opened the door, they all sitting on the floor. They thought I was immigration. All Haitians. One section of the corner we ran a station. His corner particularly, when I went there, he could give you an example of how the cars has stopped to me. Him right there is a witness. Somebody came to me and said, "Somebody didn't see me." I was through that corner, gun in the road. But his corner I went through, which is next in that corner where y'all say someone didn't see me, his corner right there is next to that same corner. And the cars just stopped. The Foxhill people are tired, and they say Fred Mitchell gotta go. And guess what? Do y'all ever see Fox campaign since? Did y'all see any video since? None. Because the Foxhill people are tired. They locked me down. We couldn't have nowhere to go around no park. Couldn't even go in the east nor the west. So somebody heard that Mr. Brown was trying to have something in Foxhill. So, I can't say the area, because they're gonna go in that area. They called me in the area and said, "You can have it over here." So I wanna say to the Foxhill people, while you're listening, y'all heard about this asylum bill? What it means to us as a Bahamian people? We have to make a change. So I wanna say to you, when you go out to vote, vote COI. And I told all of my people, put on your shirt. Put on the COI shirt. We wanna show the nation we've come to take over, to build this country to what it needs to be. I wanna close by this. We take our registry with us. And what I've noticed, a lot of people, a lot of Haitians in Foxhill came from different constituency. I asked them which constituency you came from. But they think they're coming in Foxhill to vote. When I pull out that registry, they shut the door. So we have now gotten together to put our team together. Is one of them, each section, we have different groups. And each section of Foxhill, he could tell you. I want to encourage everyone in their constituency. Please, make sure that you're registered. Make sure that you have everything together. Because if you don't, this country, we could end up losing it. And we don't wanna lose this country. So I'm saying to you, that God bless us, bless the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. We'll be the next government. Jay Jay coming?
Good evening. I'm Charmin Adely, the candidate for Golden Gate. Oh, we should have been the Ben. I am charged by the Lord with a sat there. I tried to do and say what he wants me to say. He's called me to be a minister, but he has caused me. So I have a word for this government and anybody else who's seeking to take away these islands from the Bahamian people. Thus says the Lord. Let my people go. If the P L P aren't the happiness of the people, that the God of our parents is gonna sit back when they serve him faithfully and do nothing about the cries of his people, they're sadly mistaken. I don't care who Christian Council member, whoever politician has gone on and joined the Lord, or whatever else they seek to join. The humans, we still have a, we have a card to play. You gotta pull our trunk up. Blessed is that nation. Who, Lord, is the Lord. Don't lose heart. Don't lose your courage. It's time to ascend. From there, we heaven, and I will forgive their sins. And I will heal their life. I call upon every Bahaman who declared that you serve the Lord Jesus Christ, and you stand for him. I call upon all of you to remember this covenant and this promise and stand for this nation now. We have nowhere else to go. I understand that heaven is our home, but he said occupied, then he comes. So there's home, and we go occupy. And let me help everybody understand how I calculate mine. According to the kingdom of God, he said, "One will put a thousand to fight." So, yeah, I saw something that's now on Facebook, someone calculating, "Now that you got an alibi, oh, and this place and the next." I have to laugh at you, because you are foolish. So I'm gonna call on the God of my salvation. I'm gonna ask him to deliver us. We gonna repent. Or we gonna stop being wicked. Especially in the church. That's why we in this mess right now. We, the people of God, who we called forth to stand in this hour, we have sowed to these people for filthy lucre. A bunch of big buildings, and they are empty. We supposed to be going after souls, but they going after the little cow, the little goat. Running after these people for stupidness. Unexpected nation not to go, be going to have a basket? I don't blame the sinners, I blame the saints. So what we gonna do is, they ain't gotta be all in a war looking, "Saw them tomorrow," he say, "If he gonna find ten righteous." Saw them tomorrow, but it's still being here today. So I say to all of us and to all of you, Bahamians and all those who name the name of Christ, take heart. Take courage. Don't give up. Don't give up. We still got, it's late, but it ain't too late. So let's take up our armor, Fred, get on those wheels and stop treating each other bad and pulling people down. That's the wicked business of this situation. And so God letting the P L P and F N M know, "Let my people go," telling y'all now, hear the word of the Lord today. Because you ain't counting it. All I like is, I don't mind being a zero. As long as I'm standing behind the one that good.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to share some things with you before we close out. Like, I think Ms. Adely said, we hear people saying that the Bahamas is finished. The Bahamas gone. It's too late. Remember, God is the Word. Word is power. Word is creating. As long as there are three thousand against us, and we have at least what, three hundred?
Let's go, let's go.
Three hundred, darling. We are not lost at all. We must continue speaking truth to power. That's okay if they calling you crazy. They calling me on Facebook. That rolling off, like, that just rolling off. People will normally reach out to me, "You okay, you okay, you okay?" They more effective than I am. I was born for this particular time. I am telling my people, I am talking to the Bahamian people, and I'm talking to, guess what? I'm gonna say it, and we should not feel guilty. For themselves or their own business. Now you know loud, it's the Haitian constitution. Why are we, why we feel guilty for saying? Christian constitution, if you are that. But when we say it, we are a divisive nation. They are trying to erase us from the face of this earth. And they are trying to replace us. And in this, our population is the smallest. One is one of the smallest. But guess what? We gonna stand. We gonna rise, we gonna show up to the parliament against both government, the PLP and the FNM. Because all of them are guilty. And all political officials, all person who sit in seat of power in this country, you will get called up. And my fellow Hamans, in order for us to change, we got to be able to call up our brother and our sister, our aunties and our uncles, who are sitting in the seat of power. So if I decide to call out Mr. Bean, I don't want nobody come up around me. Oh, that's my cousin. If God has to call me up, call me out. The coalition's jaw is the policy is in place for culture, our country and our people. The same way they putting policy is in place in our land to preserve another people. Now, listen to me. The asylum bill is giving free medicals, free housing, free education. Some things that are not in the bill, they already doing. But guess what? Vision 2030 is saying, you can benefit from your natural resources. Free land. Free, 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 see? What, they saying we begging? But it's Lord. We are giving to someone else, but they are saying that we are begging. Remember, the constitution is our insurance policy. That's our insurance policy. We are not selling a dream. We are trying to wake you up. So my fellow Hamans, they are going to attack the pastor's bill. When Mr. Bean, Blackmail, Steve McKinney make the call, show up our parliament. We are prepared to go all the way for our country. And when we say, change is incoming, change is here. That's just my words, change is here. My fellow Hamans, get up. Stand up. Lift up your heads to the rising sun. Bahamas land, my joy, the glory. Because the new Bahamas is gonna be rising. Thank you.
Before, before, before the next, before the next person comes up, she calls me when I'm moving to Michael. Before the next person comes up, I wanna, I wanna show y'all what's happening while y'all sleeping. While y'all are sleeping, these people are building. Now, the government is pretending to do demolitions. What they're doing is finding houses for them, and as they find housing for them, then they're demolishing those houses. They're not doing demolition like you think. Alright, some of them, they don't say nothing to them until afterwards, so they could be seeing crying on the news. Oh, I don't know where to go. And after the news leave, they say, okay, come, you straight, just go to social services. They're pretending. This is happening right before our very eyes. Alright, this is Abaco. They're on both sides of the ACB highway. They have taken over. They're getting bigger and bigger, and they are building huge structures for lots of them to live in. Lots of them, like these structures touching each other and all. This is what they are building, massive houses. Look all that shingle. Probably got it free to the Dorian stuff. Look at, look at this. This is what is happening while the Hamans are concerned about PLP, FNM, red, yellow. You are being replaced. Your children's jobs are being taken. This is what is happening right now as we speak. Someone said to me, Lincoln, if you want to win, you gotta ponder to the Haitians. Do what brave them doing and get them to love you. Otherwise, you ain't gonna be able to win. You can't be out there loving up on the Hamans, because then the Haitians gonna feel a certain type of way. But like I said, it's my Bahamian people, if loving you is wrong, I don't want to be right. I don't have no obligation to love nobody else. And while I understand the concept of what they're saying, I want you to understand that right now is not too late. But if we lose this election, you hear how they saying now, oh, you gotta go ponder to them. Imagine what's gonna happen after that. If they are so afraid now, imagine if we lose this election and all these people start flooding in. But with this asylum bill, it's not gonna just be the Haitians, the Chinese could do the same thing. The Cubans could do the same thing. We class class in this country. They already treat us like last class, but there could be several ethnic groups that outnumber us easily. Majority rules. Majority rules, remember? I keep telling you all that. Majority rules. And if majority put the PLP and FNM back in, they are voting to let this country be taken over. Because that is the agenda of both of them. It's that simple. And that's why we doing this. But I didn't just come here to talk, I came here to educate the Bahamian people and to let you know that I plan to fight. I plan to take it to the House of Assembly. I plan to fight. This one can't pass. This is not like that numbers bill, where they just ignored us and did what they wanted to do. That didn't have a real catastrophic, I had some Bahamians that make some money illegally, some criminals, criminals are gonna be made, you know, legal. Alright, it's still criminal, because if you pay off a police to do what you doing, it's still criminal. You know, the government get paid off to do, to legalize something, that's still criminal technically. But that had certain effects, but the effect of this is that this country, as you know it, to be over. It's serious. This is not about PLP, FNM, COI. This is about a nation. And the thing is, we are gonna be the only ones fighting for this nation while the PLP and FNM is fighting for themselves. But I call on all the Hamans, whatever your political persuasion, to wake up and to realize that for one time, we gotta stick together. We gotta stand together. I've taught you about what happened to the people in Fiji. They were caught up on their two parties. Caught up. And Indians started to increase in their population. Indians was the common people who used to do their yard and clean their house and take care of their babies. And in short order, those Indians' numbers started to creep up, until the politicians start to ponder to them, the same way brave them doing. Every election, they pondered the Indians, and then they get voted in, until Indians' population marched theirs. And they were still, everyone still concentrated on their two parties. And last minute, Indians put forward their own candidate. Next thing, that candidate won. And then everyone said, oh my God, what just happened? They didn't even see that. That was ridiculous. That was like Haitian man with a dick accent coming to he running for prime minister. And everyone laughing, and where you think you going? That's what happened, because they had the numbers. So it didn't matter his qualification, nothing, all they know is that's one of us. And they voted for him. And guess what happened after that? They started to give out all the natural resources, all the beachfront properties, Fiji got some beaches. They got to give out all the good stuff to Indians back from home, because by then Indians started to be wealthy. And they started to give away everything to Indians, and then the people were like, oh my God, what if we just do? And they had to have a coup d'etat. They had to overthrow the president. And guess what? They did it. And it worked. The people finally decided to come together for something. And they had a coup d'etat. And the international community sided with the Indians. You know why? Because majority rules. They said, this man won fair and square. Those people are Fijians, not Indians. They got Fijian passport. Y'all let that happen. And so the Indian took back over, and then they had another coup d'etat, two in one year, nineteen eighty-seven. They've had four coups, because Indians kept taking over. They had to defend their country by violence. I'm starting to think that the men in this nation are too soft to defend this country. And so I don't want it to have to get to that. Because I don't want to have to be out there with a few good men fighting for this country while everyone scared. Let's not let it get to that. Let's do this the right way. Let's stand together as united people before it's too late. Because at the end of the day, we cannot let this country be taken over. These people are coming in their bowl. I see Chinese beating the Hamans in the street. I don't care if they're Bahamian teeth for Snickers. You can't come in my country and beat no Bahamian in my street. That ain't happening. You call the police, and you let the police deal with them. But I ain't having no foreigner beat no Bahamian in the street. Not while I alive. You're shopping business there in the first place. We let you have it there, govern yourself in our country. Hamans are being cut out of contracts and jobs, etc. Foreigners are going to the prime minister office. Hamans standing in line, watching the foreigners walk past them to go inside and come back out with contract. Right now, as we speak, and we running here shaking pump, red and yellow and blue, pom pom? Pom poms. It seem like that big word, I gotta pronounce that right eh? But ladies and gentlemen, that's how serious this is. And so that's why we're doing this. And so the international community, the UN is watching this right now. The US government is watching this right now. The United Kingdom is watching this right now. The Bahamian government is watching this right now. And I just want to say to you that we are gonna stand up for our nation. We are going to stand up as the Hamans in this nation. And we are not against immigration. We want people come here, you know? But we just don't want them come here and take over. We are changing the paradigm. We ain't working for them, they coming to work for us. And so we can fix this country right now before it's too late. The many people might feel that it's too late. I don't think it's too late. You know why? Because I still breathing. And I can fight for this. I can't speak for nobody else, but I can fight for this. Alright, and so we are, we are going to, to, to make sure that we are vigilant. You know Bill getting in the house from now on, without me knowing what's going on. And I want to say to the Bahamian people, do you see how effective it was to have a COI in the House of Assembly to stop this bill? Imagine if there are more of us. Just imagine if there are more of us. And so if you want this country to operate properly, put us in there. Put us in there. Let us fix this. Some of you believe that we can't win the government, but you believe that we could win some seats. I believe we could win the government. But for those of you feel we might only win some seats, don't you think that's a good thing? To have us in the house to keep them in check? Alright? But we gave it a whole hog. So ladies and gentlemen, this bill is coming back in a different form. It's gonna be shape shifted again, and they're gonna bring it back. They could hide certain acts in any bill. So I don't want y'all thinking it have to be called that thing. They could be bringing an act, talking about this a labor act, because that's the one that's coming next. And in the labor act, they could start talking about immigrants in it. Alright, if you don't read the whole thing. That's, they do that all the time around the world. That's how they speak, that's Trojan bills. You have to look out for them. So they talking about, a labor act is coming? Watch, and they may can't do it now because I say it. But watch, they're gonna try to find some way to get this in there. Alright, so we gotta be vigilant. Don't let them fool you. We're not our grandparents. We could read. We can understand. I don't care if they bring in a lollipop bill. We could read that, because in that lollipop bill could be these asylum words. It don't have to be a whole bill called asylum bill. It could just be certain words. Alright, or it could be anything to point to the convention that makes it legal. Y'all let's be vigilant eh? Now, I want to say to my new candidates, let's get to work. Get on the ground, and let's go and take that, those constituencies. I believe that you are talented, gifted men. Welcome aboard. I'm honored to have you aboard. Let's go take this country. I want to, come, come, you green, you come in, because I didn't forget about you, come. I wanted to say to all of you, all of our candidates, let's get on the ground, let's get to work, let's do what we have to do. I know you've been on the ground. But let's make ourselves visible, and let's touch every door. That's how we're gonna win this, boots on the ground. Touch every door. Go ahead, green.
In listening, reading that bill, I'm listening to all the comments. Sometimes I like to look at things, set up the glass half empty. Things we go for sure are that. But we thank Iron for bringing this attention to the leader and the party as a whole. Whatever, whatever comes down this side, just by reading that bill and listening to comments. We know that this PLF and LPT, they really don't care about us or this country. We know they have plans that really don't really involve the Bahamian populace. We know that their intentions is to basically do away with the Bahamian people. We know that they don't really want the Bahamian people to have anything. That's why they continuously order natural resources. And we know that for fifty plus years now, the only thing that we have gotten from this government is pain, suffering, and poverty. In the form of taxes, burden, homelessness, suffering, chairs, people sleeping in their vehicles on beaches. These are all the things. These are all the things that we've gotten, gotten from these governments. So the thing is now, what are, what is it that we gonna do? I, I've, I've been hearing a lot of, you know, people talking about what's going on and what's wrong, yes, you know, and all these things. But what is it that we're going to do? Are we going to wait until they bring this bill back? Are we gonna wait until they try, like how, uh, they would say, put it in a different form to, you know, to bring to the people to try sneaking it? Or are we going to take action now to ensure that the very thought of them bringing this bill back in any form is removed from their minds? I say we go with the latter. We have to move to ensure that things like this never happen in our country, cause this just does, this doesn't only just affect us, you know? This will affect generations of Bohemians. This will affect our children, children, children. They will remember us, this generation, they will remember us, you know? The question is now, what will they remember us for? What are we now prepared to do to ensure that we erase the very thought of this bill out of their minds? How are we going to act? What is it that we're going to do tomorrow to ensure that this bill is gone from their minds? I, I, um, I watched a YouTube, uh, you're with a queer old fellow, we don't have nothing against them, you know? I mean, if you really think about it, if you go into a country and you receive the people to be weak, when you try to take it over, especially if the country is sufficient environment, land, you being able to reproduce, being able to support your family, that's maybe the way they feel now. I just must watch a YouTube video, um, with a Asian fellow. He is cool, he goes about Haiti and he takes, you know, posts a lot of YouTube videos about the different businesses and stuff. He came to the balance. And he was quite naturally, he's Haitian and people of Haitian, he's excited and saying how Haitian people here taking over. They are opening all the businesses, you know, and doing a lot of nice things, you know? Really pushing the Haitian agenda. There comes a time when we must decide whether or not, uh, their presence in this country is one of legitimate immigration processes or whether it's an invasion. And how we determine that? When the people pushing agenda that they are taking over, it's not immigration anymore. It's an invasion. It's not just an invasion of our space, it's an invasion of those unborn people's space. So what is it that people are doing? We could say a lot of things, we could do a lot of complaining, but we must take, we must take flight about you. We have to do something. We can't let it get to the point where they, these people, and they don't touch up the Haitians, being Chinese, whatever, you know, persons coming in. What is it that we're going to do? What, what we can do? What is it that we're going to do? We have to do something. Complaining and talking about it is good, that's making people aware of what's going on. But what are we going to do? I was talking to a fellow the other day, the fellow is from Southland, just give him a minute please. From Southland, uh, he was saying, oh, we gotta pray. So he said, um, you know, it's good to pray, but there's times when you got to do something. There's nothing wrong with praying, praying is good, it's good for the, for the soul, you know? Whenever God wanted to, wanted something done, you got a mind of action, right? You got a mind of action, right, put a mind of action in place to ensure things are done. So what is it that we are going to, what are you, the Bohemian people, prepared to do to save God, this country for your children?
Alright. With that, with that, we gotta, we gotta... You wanna say something? Oh, I didn't see you standing behind that tree, you riding behind that tree, good, you slimy.
Good evening, um, my name is Michael Lockhart. I'm not gonna say much, but I've been saying a lot. Pine Wood Gardens, we have a great opportunity here. I saw a video, before I came here to say, I saw a video. And I believe, uh, if you look at twenty thirty, Mr. Lincoln Bean said something at twenty thirty. And today, I believe, Mr. Lincoln Bean has made President Trump the greatest president that America will ever seen. President Trump signed a document for the American babies, then they become age eighteen, some seven hundred thousand dollars would be on their account. Mr. Lincoln Bean. Mr. Lincoln Bean. The Bohemians, you have a great man right in front of you, the Bohemians. Mr. Lincoln Bean, I consider this gentleman, I believe this man is a genius. Donald Trump is now, I believe, personally the greatest president because of the same man. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Just you understand what he is saying, they are now, when a child is born, going to put money into an endowment fund for them, and it will be multiplied with the stock market and it will grow with the stock market. And the, the trend is that the stock market always grows over time, so even though it goes up and down, it goes up and down as it's going up. And that within, uh, eighteen years, uh, that money, uh, they'll, they'll, they'll make some profit from that, and then a certain portion of it will go to that child. And that is also something I talked to his people about, and now you're hearing it. Uh, you're hearing it, uh, is going to happen. We were talking about, I think, starting with ten thousand dollars, they are talking about one thousand, of course, they got hundreds of millions of people. Um, um, but, and they are able to, to trade that on a huge market to be able to multiply it to get it to where it needs to get. But that's the same concept that we discussed with them, and so now you're seeing it happen. So it is another great coincidence, or it's based on the conversation that I've been having with them. The things that I've been telling to you is all doable. This is real, we just need leaders with vision. Or we need to stop running behind chicken and bear and fifty dollars in a t-shirt. We can transform this nation. Every Bohemian child could be well taken care of by the time as they get eighteen. Everyone, everyone who retires in this country could retire well off. We will invest in Bohemian entrepreneurs because you, the Bohemian entrepreneurs, have the ideas to take this country far, to build this country, not the politicians. Stop talking about asking the politician what he could do. I don't care what a politician is gonna do with the park in the community. I don't care what he could do with the speed bumps. I care about those thousands of Bohemians who were born with a gift, and they don't have the money or opportunity to bring that forward to this world. That's an abomination because God sent him with that gift. And it was our duty to nurture that young man or woman so that they can become all that they can be. Summonance, again, from the international community sent, uh, sent for me. They wanna have discussions about building this country, again with, uh, uh, the most, uh, what do they call him? Uh, the most creative man in the world and others. People are watching this all over the world, you know? They right here, live watching this. And so I'm gonna go have that conversation with them, and we're gonna continue to plan the new Bahamas. Because we can do this. I'm gonna continue, continue those conversations. I don't want foreign governments taking what I'm saying and implementing it. I want our government doing it, brave, why don't steal some of my ideas, man? Come on, man. Take some of these ideas, don't let Trump take all. And you know they're saying, oh, just no Trump idea, cause he didn't do it in his first term, and no Americans even thought on that wavelength. It had to be something that spurred that. And so we're gonna continue to do what we're doing, and if Bohemians want to move forward in the new Bahamas, then let's go. But if you want, keep these backwards people who can't even build a hospital, can't even get good healthcare, can't get good education or nothing, then you keep going with them. But I'm ready for the new Bahamas, you all ready? Alright, well, we are, we are gonna get there, we're almost there, and so, uh, we're gonna make it happen. So I wanna thank all of y'all for being here, being a part of the show. Uh, I wanna congratulate again our new candidates, all of our candidates, go out there, hit the street. Um, thank you to Aisha for hosting this, and thank you to Blackmail for, wasn't Blackmail good? It was, he did a very, very good job, and so Blackmail did a good job, and so we're gonna continue to do what we have to do to take this Bahamas to the next level. Ladies and gentlemen, this has been COI Live, uh, thank you, if we call you this week, come. Cause they have Monday, tomorrow, that they could table a bill, and Wednesday, that they could table a bill. They, we heard that they may close the House of Assembly on Wednesday, alright, so we don't need them sneaking that in there. Alright, so if Aaron send me the message, um, I could be there, alright? And, and it could be a problem in this country, alright? So let's stay focused, worry about the gossip and the people who paid to spread all kind of rumors and lies, don't focus on that. Let's stay focused on the new Bahamas, cause listen, after this, they gotta attack me, alright? They, they might start attacking Aaron now, Aaron don't get in their way, but they might have to start attacking them. But, um, something gotta give, alright? Well, we gotta end first, and then we'll, we'll, I'll, I'll talk to you. But ladies and gentlemen, we did, we did four whole hours today, and so, uh, but I think this was worth it. I think we got to educate the Bohemian people, and, um, we're gonna continue doing that, so God bless you, we love you, see you next time.